Did we, or did we message them that we were having technical difficulties?
Yeah, we were sending messages to the waiting room.
Okay, good. All right. I'm sort of ready.
All right, we're letting them in.
All right, is everyone in?
That's everyone for now, yes.
All right, thank you everyone for your patience. We were having some connection issues with Zoom. All of the commissioners struggled, so I'm glad to see you and glad to see that we have some people that were patient. So let's begin our meeting. This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is called the Order. May we have roll call, please? Yes?
Commissioner Schwartz?
Present.
Commissioner Freeman?
Present.
Commissioner Meehan?
Here.
Commissioner News?
Here.
First item, or next item on our agenda is public comment. Please be reminded that public comments should be limited to items over which the City Commission has supervision, control jurisdiction, and advisory power. Please, at all times when you speak, state your name and address at the beginning, as well as you can either raise your hand, physically raise your hand, put in the icon, raise your hand icon, or put your name in the chat, and we will call on you. Do we have any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, go ahead, Clay.
Hi, everyone. I'm Clay Bolt. I live at 128 South Eighth Street, and I'm a member of the Livingston Parks and Trails Committee. Some of you may have noticed bright yellow and black banners and yard signs around town featuring a large B in the slogan No Mo May, and these represent a new initiative developed by the Livingston Parks and Trails Committee, which has been made possible thanks to the generous support of the city of Livingston. In particular, I'd like to offer a special thanks to Lisa Lawie and Shannon Holmes for their support. And for those of you who are not aware, I just wanted to give you a bit of information about this initiative. The purpose is to support Livingston's pollinator species, particularly spring bees and butterflies with much-needed food in the form of bandy lions and other naturally occurring wildflowers on public and private grounds. And you might think of this as a way to turn a negative, spring weeds into a positive in the form of more pollinators and reduce maintenance costs for the city. This relatively simple undertaking will help to position Livingston as a leader in native bee conservation in the state of Montana. And in fact, we can all be proud that, to the best of my knowledge, Livingston is the first city in the state of Montana to support a No Mo May initiative, which I think is really cool. A 2020 study of a similar initiative in Appleton, Wisconsin suggests No Mo May homes had three times higher bee richness in terms of species and five times higher bee abundance than frequently mowed green spaces. Just, just to kind of give you a little bit of background quickly, North America is home to nearly 4,000 species of native bees, and over 450 of those are found here in Montana, with new species being found all the time. And in 2017, Montana State University estimated that Montana is home to the greatest number of bumblebee species in the nation, and many of those are threatened. And in fact, here in Livingston, the western bumblebee, which was once a common species, is found throughout our town. So we're really lucky because it's actually gone extinct in certain parts of its range. So these initiatives are actually super helpful. And bumblebees are some of the most important pollinators in Montana, which pollinate a broad range of crops, local gardens, and native plants. So No Mo May test plots will be located in Mars Park, the field at Mike Webb Park, Mayor's Landing, and the former roping arena area along Highway 89 South Bike Path. And we also have a limited number of yard signs, which have been made available for residents who want to participate by not mowing their yards in May and are willing to complete a short survey at the end of the month. So if you're interested in getting a sign for yourself, you can contact the Livingston Recreation Department, which is located upstairs at the Civic Center to secure a sign of your own. And then finally, for those of you who'd like to learn more about our native bees that we have here in Livingston, I'll be leading a free community conversation tomorrow at 12:00 PM for the Park County Environmental Council, entitled Our Livingston's Native Bees and How to Protect Them. So hope you guys can join me. Thank you.
Thank you, Clay, and thanks for the update from the Parks and Trails. I know you guys met on that, or we did, we met on that, and discussed it on Wednesday, or last Wednesday. So thank you for the update. Any other public comment? I don't see anyone's hand. Patricia, Patricia, go ahead.
You need to unmute, Patricia.
Thank you, Quentin. Did the city ever determine how much we were going to get from the president's stimulus money? And is there any public arena in which the public will have any kind of say in how that money will be spent?
First of all, please state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then, yep.
Patricia Graybo, 204 East Calendar Street, Livingston. Okay.
All right, so your question is that are we, or do we have an update on the stimulus money, the second, the second go-around? And as well as how the public may be involved in that?
Yes, and how that money will be spent. Is there a schedule of how the public will be involved in how that money will be spent?
Michael, do you have any updates as to when that that funding is potentially to the cities? Or do we have any inform-
No, we haven't received any additional information since the last time we talked about it. There's just estimates. I know the legislature is working on it, but we haven't had any further, we have no solid amounts, and we don't have any guidance yet from the state.
I had heard 1.8 million, but that is just speculation then. Is that correct? Okay, is there any kind of plan to, that would, could be in place for the public to have input into how that money would be spent? Because we know we're going to get it.
We haven't discussed it. We haven't discussed a plan for how that may happen. But throughout the last process, we had a lot of public input through public meetings, through requests, et cetera. So it wasn't that public was not included or, or involved, but we had multiple meetings and multiple community members giving us their thoughts and requesting.
But I'm not talking about the last round, I'm talking about this round.
I would, we haven't, like I said, planned.
Would it go on the agenda at any point?
Um, we haven't requested that as of yet. I don't think that is something that we wouldn't consider.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I, I think that, I understand that you said you had multiple meetings, and I, I was at several of those meetings. But what the public said and what ended up, the money being spent on was two different things completely. I never once in the entire time that I heard public input on, on the CARES money, did I ever hear was going to any kind of building. So I want to be sure that, that we, we know it's going to be here. So we know that. And we want to hear what the public has to say as far as where this money is actually going to be spent. So we know ahead of time that we could have it on the agenda for the City Commission, and we could start scheduling those meetings. So I, my, my interest right now is in asking the City Commission clearly, let's start, put it, let's put it on the agenda, and let's schedule these meetings now. We don't need to know how much it is, we know we're going to get it. We kind of know, kind of ballpark how much it is. So we would be remiss if we did not. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment? I don't see anyone's name in the chat. And no hands are up, so I hope I didn't miss anyone. So we will move on. Our next item on the agenda is consent items. Do I have a motion for consent items A, B, C, D, and D? Or any that you would like pulled for consideration?
I'll make a motion to approve consent items. A, B, C, and D.
Can I ask a quick question? Sorry, I didn't unmute fast enough.
Go ahead.
I just noticed the minutes were a little bit different. Is that, is there any? I don't necessarily want it polled, but I just would love to hear if there's like a change in policy on minutes? Or, I don't know, any updates on that?
Michael, can you answer?
Absolutely. It's just new formatting because of the new website that ties into it. So Muticode is now just taking care of all of it, so it's just a new format. And it's actually, I think, more in line with the agenda, so it's a little easier to read.
Okay, dinner's ready.
Michael, can you mute the public?
Can you mute, Patricia?
Yeah.
You need to mute. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that. Okay, so it just falls in line with the new website, is what you're saying, to make sure it's accessible to all members of the community? Thank you for that. That's helpful information. That's the only question I had, Drell.
All right, thank you, Melissa. Um, I, it looks like with the muting issue, sorry, I'm doing some adjusting here as well. Please mute yourselves when you are not speaking, and also we will mute you if there's feedback or any issues, and we can help to get that fixed by unmuting you after. All right. So we do have a motion, and we didn't get a second. Do we have a second? So we have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Meehan. Roll call, please.
Chair Hoagland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Freeman? Commissioner Freeman? Commissioner Meehan?
Four.
Commissioner News?
Four.
I think Mel was muted. And now is, can't unmute, so maybe if we could help him with that?
We can't help it with that.
We can? Okay. All right. Oh, Mel, there you got it.
Yeah, I think I'm okay.
Yep, now you are.
Thank you.
So we had a motion for consent items, and we didn't hear your vote.
Oh, four.
All right, thank you. Moving on to proclamations, we don't have any proclamations tonight. We do have one scheduled public comment. We have Bob Church of Great West Engineering to present the 2021 Green Waste Study findings and recommendations. Mr. Carduce.
Thank you, ma'am chair. So Bob, who is going to present that, is also having trouble getting on right now, so he's not available to give the presentation. We can push that later in the meeting and see if we can get the technical, get him on for that portion, or we can just push it to the next meeting. It's up to you.
Well, let's try to get him on if we can tonight. If we can't, we'll have to push it. How about that? If we could try get him so we're a little more timely on, because we have a lot to do every meeting. I'd rather have it tonight if, if he can make it work.
We will let you know if we get him on.
All right, thank you. And Michael, you're cutting out a bit. I don't know why, but you're the only person that I'm hearing as of right now. Just thought you should know. Moving on, we're going to, we have no public hearings tonight. We do have one ordinance. We have one, or ordinance number 3007, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, of its intent to amend Article 1, Section 11-2 of Livingston's municipal code to allow the sale of fireworks within incorporated city limits. Mr. Carduce.
Thank you, ma'am chair. So this is the ordinance change that was requested in relation to the last annexation by KPRK. So this is probably the most simple and straightforward ordinance change you can see. The only changes are to the title itself, which will change from fireworks sale or explosion prohibited to just fireworks explosion prohibited. And then there's a change of one word inside the Section 11-2, where we take out the word sell. So this leaves in place a prohibition on use of fireworks inside city limits, but it will no longer prohibit the sale of fireworks inside city limits.
All right, sorry, I was looking at the documents. From that, let's open it to public comment first, and then commissioner comments, if you guys don't mind, unless you have any clarifying questions right off. Okay, let's open it to public comment. Any public comment on ordinance 3007? Any public comment? If everyone muted, so you might need to unmute yourselves. Oh, we do have someone in the chat, Chris Bendin. Go ahead.
Sorry, I was looking into the sun and I couldn't see the stupid thing very well.
That's all right. Go ahead, Chris.
So during our fireworks sales, I often have to display product from time to time to to show a customer. And with the banning of shooting fireworks, that's going to limit my ability to show somebody fireworks. So that's, that's a concern that I have, not that I, that I go hog wild down there. I just, it's, it's part of what I do down there, and it's it will affect me as to how much I don't know. But we do sell fireworks by the fact that people can see them or have seen them because I was showing someone else that sort of thing. So it worries me that I will lose that ability. That's the other thing is, I don't know if I have any protection about longevity on this. What would prohibit another city commission or a city manager coming in and pulling this away from me at a later date? It's hard to run a business when I don't know what the future holds. And so I don't know how to approach that. If there's some contract we can sign that's a long-term deal allowing me to do this, I, I don't know if there's any forethought put into that. Like I said, two weeks ago, I would, there's quite a bit of value in, if in the future I wanted to sell the fireworks stand, it's worked quite a bit. Or if my oldest daughter Denise would like to take over at some point, she should, you know, it's like a family business to be able, she should be entitled to be able to do that without the city pulling that out from underneath us. So tho, those are two issues. The second issue is much more important to me than the first one. The first one's more of an inconvenience, but the second one could severely constrain my ability to control what I have. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chris. After public comment, let's try to discuss or answer that, those questions. I think, I think there's some answers to that. Any other public comment? I don't see anyone else's names. Last call on public comments?
See, Jack's hand is up.
Oh, Jack, go ahead. Sorry, I missed the little icon. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wondered, is this ordinance change going to be just for this particular person down there? Or is it for the whole city?
How about Jack? Michael, could you make sure that it, questions answered as well? Okay, when we get to commissioner comments and questions, Jack, do you want to continue talking? We'll put that on the list of questions.
Yeah, I just, you know, if it's, if it's going to be just to accommodate this gentleman down there near KPRK, I think that it should be written that he should be grandfathered in. And, and when he decides to stop, or, or they decide to stop selling fireworks down there, then they, the rest, the rest of the city will not be able to sell fireworks.
All right, thank you, Jack, for your feedback. Any other public comment? Okay, I think that is everyone. We will move it to commissioner comments. Any commissioner comments or questions on ordinance 3007? Or I think I should call it 3007. Sounds cooler.
I second the 007.
Thank you.
For a second on that.
All right, thank you.
I have some questions, and they're probably, I do have questions.
Thank you, go ahead.
Sorry, I need to, my phone keeps making noise. I'm going to make it quiet, sorry. Um, so this is probably for Courtney, because it's probably some legalese stuff. But I, so and if it's not for Courtney, Drell, whomever is appropriate. But my first question is, Section 11-6, I'm a little confused because it talks about smoking in theater. Smoking a lighted pipe cigar, cigarette, or other form of smoking material in theater, in a theater is prohibited. Can you tell me why that's in there or what that means?
I can answer that question, because it's an easy one. When you change anything in a section, you put the entire section in. So really, the only section that we're changing is 11-2. That's the only one where you see any changes. The rest of it is just because it's in Article 1. We include all the sections of 11, so 11-1, 11-3, all the way through them. But there's no changes to anything except for 11-2.
So this is just some really old code that'll probably get cleaned up at a future time, since people are not actually smoking indoors anymore in Montana.
That is correct. That ordinance has existed since, it looks like 1958.
Okay, I thought maybe it was just like an artifact, a historical artifact from not so long ago. Thanks. Okay, so that explains those questions. I'm wondering, is there, you know, is there any like special permits, or just is it like a regular business permit, since this is a new thing for Livingston, or did the fire chief offer any feedback, I'm imagining, that you want to share with the group?
Sure. So the, the sale of fireworks is already regulated by the state. All the code that exists in the administrative regulations applies no matter where the fireworks stand is. So there's already an annual inspection that's required. There are safety standards that are required. All of that is already in place, and it is covered by the state currently when it's outside the city. Once it comes inside the city, the fire chief actually will be able to do that inspection. And so we can verify for the city that all the, the safety rules that are currently being followed are still being followed when it's inside the city. But there's no additional rules that are required. There's no additional inspections or licenses that are required because it's regulated by the state, a lot like liquor license. There's not a lot we need to do locally, other than ensure that the state standards are being followed.
Great, thank you. And then I had the same, well, I think it's important to address Chris's questions. And Jack brought up a good point, too, that there's more than one way to address the issue. So um, if it's okay with you, Chair Hoagland, maybe starting with Chris's questions. He talked about displaying fireworks. It sounds like that that's of interest to him, and I don't know if there's a city response for that, but if so, it'd be great to hear it.
Yeah, Michael, can you, you know, it's kind of like a car, car lot, right? You have to show off the car, and it usually means driving it. So what is the option for, for an owner of a company like this? Or a business like this?
The option will be whatever option you wish to give them is the commission. If you want to write that into the ordinance, you certainly can. If you don't want to, then it won't be allowed. It's really your decision. So if you want to write a specific section of the ordinance that say the use of fireworks as demonstration purposes for sale from an authorized fireworks stand, I'm sure Courtney could write something up fancy to make sure that that can't be skirted around by other people who say they were demonstrating their fireworks to their friends. Because there's always unintended consequences of anything that you allow. And so you have to be very careful in how you write it. But if the commission wishes to do so, that's a change we can certainly make and add that as a clause to the law, or the ordinance in this case, that says if you have an authorized fireworks stand inside the city, you are authorized to demonstrate fireworks, and then you can put any limitations on that that you wish. But that's really up to the commission's discretion on how you would like to handle it.
Melissa, can I ask something off of that? But you do have the table, but a table, the floor?
Yep, I'm happy, I'm happy to, I'm happy for you to do that.
All right, thank you. If we did add that in, can you help me with a bit, or us with a bit of protocol? To add that language in, do we table this to have it come back, or do we, how can we, because we don't want to write, write that information into it in our motion? We want that brought to us with clear language. So how does that, how do next steps go if we are to add language?
I think the easiest way would be to say, to move to pass the ordinance amended to allow limited use of fireworks for demonstration purposes, and then direct the staff to bring that back to you in language at the next reading. Courtney, would you agree with that?
I could get behind that, yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, Melissa, thanks for letting me have the floor for a moment.
Absolutely. My other question is, I wonder, and this is, I think, getting at what Chris and Jack both mentioned, is why, it seems like there's more than one way to do this, and I wonder about this option versus just grandfathering in this one business since they were annexed. Is there anything we could consider about a different approach about just grandfathering one business as opposed to opening up fireworks sales across the city?
So the answer to that is yes, but no. We can't write a law for one business. You can't say this business has the right to do something, and no other business in the city has the right to do it. There is no grandfathering when it comes to laws or ordinances. That's not a, that's not a thing that you can do, because an ordinance is the base for everybody in the city. So we have to allow it in the ordinance before we can do anything. And when you allow it in the ordinance, you have to allow it for everyone. You can't specify that it's allowable for some people and not others. However, that's, that's the no part. We have to do it this way. But the yes part is, that isn't the end of the process. Once it's allowed in the city, we can still zone it. We can zone allowable uses in the different zones in the city. So we can say fireworks sales are only allowed in industrial, or they're only allowed in highway commercial, or they're only allowed in whatever combination you want. Or the zoning commission, because it'll go to the zoning commission for this recommendation, the zoning commission could say- Or the zoning commission, because it'll go to the zoning commission for this recommendation, the zoning commission could say, that's not allowable use in the city. So while it's not against the law, it's not in our table of allowed uses for zones, so it's not allowable in any zone. However, with zoning, there's grandfathering. So if you already have a non-conforming use of land and it's zoned out, you get to continue to use that non-conforming use until, and Courtney backed me up on this one, I think it, until it's not used that way for two years. So you can pass it on to your children, you can sell the business to someone else, as long as it's continued to be using, be used for that purpose. And there's not a gap of two years it's grandfathered in. Oh, Matthew, let's correct me on this, because I probably was close, but not quite right.
It's one year.
One year, it's one year.
Okay, so I want to put that in regular people talk and you can tell me if I'm right or not. Because this actually happened in the county, right, with zoning and grandfathering. So we cannot grandfather ordinances because that's basically discriminatory. But we can allow, what was the word you used? Un-conventional? No. A non-conforming. So it's a non-conforming use and you can basically zone it to one property? Or like?
You would basically zone it out of the city. There would be no zones that it would be allowable in.
So you can make the ordinance so that it's allowed and then no zones allow it. And so then that means for the Bendon family, as long as the business stays in the Bendon family, it could stay in the family for as long as Livingston is a town, if this ordinance doesn't change and the zoning doesn't change, it would stay in the Bendon family and it would still be allowed until the property no longer was in the Bendon family? No.
It doesn't require that it stay in the Bendon family. It just requires that it continue to have that use and that that use not lapse for more than a year.
Is it tied to that property then?
Yes.
Okay, so if they wanted to sell the business, they would have to sell it on the property.
This is the same thing that happens at Rosedale Greenhouse.
That is helpful, Courtney, because that's something that everybody can probably understand. Thank you. That's like really helpful. I don't know if that helps anybody else. I don't know if that helps Chris and Jack, but that helps me. So this ordinance is basically a way to grandfather in the business without being discriminatory.
The zoning allows for that.
The zoning allows for that, which there will be no zone change.
Well, we have to zone it because it hasn't been zoned before. So when it goes in front of the zoning commission, then what they decide for the zoning will decide whether it is allowable in, say, industrial or highway commercial, or not allowed at all. And if they zone it out where it's not allowed, then it's a non-conforming use that's allowed as long as it doesn't lapse use for more than a year.
I think I'm following now. Thank you.
And ju- just to clarify on what Courtney said, those are two different issues that'll go in front of the zoning commission. One will be the issue on what to zone the property, which is not related to whether or not there's fireworks there or not. It's just going to be, what's the recommended zoning for that property? The second issue will be, where do we put fireworks sale in the allowed use table? Is it allowed in any zones, just certain zones or no zones? And that'll be a separate decision. But those two things together will either allow the sale of fireworks in that zone if, if the zoning commission and the commission decides that it is allowable. Or it'll grandfather it if it's decided that it's not allowable in that zone. Even if we, even if we zone that R two and we say fireworks are allowable in industrial only, it would be grandfathered in that R two until it lapses for a year. So I hope that was clear and not more confusing.
Yes, it's clear. It's almost like you need to be a city attorney or a planner to follow this conversation, but I think it makes sense. I'm getting it. I am, that's really all my questions. I don't know if any of you have questions after all that. But thanks.
Alright, thank you, Melissa. I do have, I think I have a answer for Chris. His second question was about if another city manager or comes in and wants to change the ordinance and his business is at risk, then to the changes in that ordinance. I mean, we are just a commission, right? And commissions change and city managers change, but in the end, it is the commission's choice to change ordinances. It's brought to us with recommendations some through the city and through the community. But if it was changed, that would be a commission's prerogative. Am I correct in saying that, Michael?
That is correct. The, the commission always has the authority to change the ordinances. And there's no way to handcuff the future commissions from changing the ordinances. That's just not allowed. So even if you wrote an ordinance that said the commission couldn't change the ordinance, the commission could eliminate the ordinance that said they couldn't change the ordinance. So commissions always have the authority to write any ordinances they want. So I don't know, Courtney, is there any legal issues with once you're allowed a use, can you get, can an ordinance zone, or can an ordinance eliminate that use? Sure. They could, they could change the law and disallow a use. I'm sure that there would be as much public input on that as there has been on this, at least. But yeah, you're allowed to change the law. You're the legislative body. And if there's a reason to do that down the road, that we can't foresee now, certainly that could happen.
Thank you. Just watch what happened at the legislature, state legislature this year. There was all kinds of changes. And they didn't always reflect what was in the last, uh, last laws. So just that shows how commissions can change laws as well as states. Alright, I hope that answered your question. So I think just, I like the way the ordinance, ordinance is written, although it's from nineteen fifty eight, which is now a few changes, but I would like to see the it amended and then the language brought to us at some point. As far as the language that we discussed as an alternative, in my opinion, it needs to include that. Other than that, I, I have nothing else. Anyone else? Any other commissioners?
Yeah, I'll, I'll thank you, Courtney. Thank you. I know you're watching the timelines because there's a lot of timelines to keep track of between the city commission and the zoning commission to make sure things move forward for the Bendons to stay on track with the service they provide people in Livingston and the county. So thank you for watching all that and interpreting all this for us.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Quentin.
Yeah, um. Uh, the, yeah, the reason for this ordinance, the way it's written right now is, you know, that I discussed with Mike is, um, this gives a clear path right now to be able to, within thirty days, to allow the sale the Bendons to sell fireworks on the state-appointed days, whatever they are. In far as zoning, stuff like that, we could take that up at a later, later date, once we know what the property is going to be zoned and then we can, you know, work with fireworks zoning then. You know, have zones, whether it be highway commercial or what. But I thought this was just the quickest path to get us once they're annexed, they will be able to sell fireworks in the meantime, until we know what they're going to be selling. So I'm not too thrilled about, you know, demonstrating fireworks inside city limits, but it's not a big hangup for me at all. So I would be amenable to including that language in this ordinance. I yield.
Alright, thank you, Quentin. Anyone else? Okay, uh, do we have a motion on ordinance three double oh seven?
I move we accept ordinance three double oh seven.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion by maybe and a second by Schwartz. Rule call, please. Yes?
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Maybe.
For.
Commissioner Noots.
For.
Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is our first resolution. And tonight, we just to update, Resolution D, well, we're going to move that to another meeting because we are waiting on the county to have to meet on something related to it. And they have not gotten to it as well. So we will pause uh, Resolution B and continue with A, B, C, and E. So going on to Resolution A, Resolution number forty nine fifty eight, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, authorizing the city manager to apply for transportation alternatives grant funding for the North Second and Park Street intersection, and authorizing to commit up to one hundred thousand dollars in matching cash funds. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to turn it over to Lisa to present this one to you, since she's worked the most with it. Lisa.
Thanks, Mike. Um, this, this particular program is funded through federal pastor monies with MDT. And it's called the Transportation Alternatives Program. We've been very fortunate to, um, receive this grant on prior occasions. It's what we actually finished the O Street Trail with. So this, this particular program is, is exciting in that it focuses on the alternative modes of transportation that we're looking at now as well as, um, a very strong look at safety and improving safety in areas where we know there are, there are potential issues. The program only requires a thirteen point four percent match and it's got to be a cash match. So through this resolution, you would be committing funds for that cash match from our transportation impact fees. So that's what those are designed to do. And this is a very exciting way to move a project like this to the forefront of MDT's radar, as well as getting it completed quicker than it normally would have. So the particular project that we are proposing in this cycle is at the North Second and Park Street intersection to improve the sidewalks in front of the depot and down, extending down to B Street would also include installation of pedestrian crossing indicators as well as some signage to, to kind of move pedestrians towards the designated pedestrian crossing, rather than just kind of crossing anywhere they felt like crossing in that area. We all know the sidewalk in front of the depot is not ADA compliant because it has stairs. So this would be engineered in such a way to make the entire area ADA compliant, which may or may not involve removing those stairs. As part of this program, MDT contracts with engineers. So that would be determined at the time of final engineering before we went out for construction bids, if we were awarded this grant. I've had conversations with the Depot Foundation Board. Um, they are on board as well with supporting this grant. We've already received letters of support from Park County Community Foundation, Livingston Food Resource Center, Livingston BID and CBB, as well as Livingston Healthcare. So this is, this is a, a particular project that has a lot of support to enhance pedestrian capacity and safety throughout a very well-traveled area, as well as enhance the safety and notifications for motorists in the area that you're in a crossing, you're in a congested area, and it will help resolve in, in area in our community that is not ADA compliant for all of our citizens. So with that, we also have letters of support pending, both from the Depot Foundation, after Active Transportation Coalition, who we've spoken with as well, Parks and Trails Committee has been requested to provide a letter if they so chose. Park County Environmental Council Analyst Spree has committed to providing a letter of support as well. So that's kind of a general overview of it. If we were awarded this grant, we would probably be looking at construction no earlier than, um, twenty twenty three, most likely twenty twenty four, just because of the process that MDT goes through to both secure a, an engineering firm, have that engineering completed in a collaborative process with the community. And then they would go through, um, a, a regular construction bid letting process, which can, can take a little bit. So I think earliest, if we were awarded this, we would be looking at twenty twenty three. Um, but most likely it'd be twenty twenty four for actual construction. Any questions?
Alright, thank you, Lisa, for that information. Um, let's open it to public comment first. And then Commissioner questions or comments, unless you have a clarifying question before we open it to public.
I just have a clarifying. Lisa, did you, did you say the, it would be the, it looks like the second street to the depot and then also the B Street? Where it goes? So that's just off the map, but both of those crossings would be addressed in this project?
Yes, and the sidewalks, um, to the north side of Park Street, so right in front of the depot and the beanery where it kind of narrows to about a foot and a half in some parts and, and definitely need some improvement work done to it. So that section would also be taken care of through this process.
And the design isn't figured out because that's part of the process, is figure the engine.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the process. The, the, the images you have in front of you are, um, more conceptual. Because the, the engineers will determine what the best way is to, to address those, those couple of stairs, how you get, um, you know, curb and gutter installed as well safely, still meet the five-foot minimums for sidewalk width. So all of that's done through the process.
Thank you. That makes sense.
Okay, any other clarifying questions before we open it to public? Alright, any public comments on Resolution forty nine fifty eight? Any public comment? Okay, it doesn't appear to, or there doesn't appear to be any public comment. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes?
If I could ask Lisa a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Quentin.
Yeah, Lisa, with this proposal, um, it does show the curb extension um, across the street from the depot. That is part of the plan, right?
It is.
Good.
It is. Do, that helps with the transitions for folks with some mobility issues. It is also, um, in front of the depot on the other side as well. We would address that.
Right.
A little bit of transition that you see with kind of the blue checkered area.
Yeah, if there's ever a place where curb extensions needed, for, you know, pedestrian sightlines and stuff like that, you're right there.
Yes.
Thank you.
Michael, could you put that up again? Could you put up the, the image or the design possibilities so that, um, I know Quentin was asking a question, but we're not looking at. So Quentin, you were referring to which part of it?
In front of the, uh, the Murray, uh, the curb extension on Park Street. Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, I just, I wish it would just happen sooner. Thanks.
Okay, any other commissioners?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mel.
I've always shudder every time I go down, mostly coming through the underpass and taking a right going in that direction. When you go for a block, you have young kids, bicycles, all kinds of things trying to get over to get over the, to get the underpass. Does this help that situation, if you understand what I'm talking about? If you come out of that tunnel and you take a right for about a block, there's a cross, there's a crossing there. And that's where I shudder when I see a lot of young kids, you know, come from school or trying to go home. They've got to cross there to get to the stairs that goes under the underpass.
It, it will assist in that because we will have pedestrian crossings, signal lights there for folk. So it will, it will definitely be safer for, for, especially for the kiddos coming out of school and crossing.
Okay, yeah, because it's wide open right now. There's no definition to it. I appreciate that. Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mel. I guess I will ask a few questions off of that. So Mel was asking about, you know, improving that pedestrian crossing, so more at Main and Park. Does that, so you're saying it's included, some of that work extends all the way?
Some of that work will, that'll, yes.
So from that image that you guys just had up on the screen, where the, the railing is, so would the sidewalk extend all the way to just the underpass?
Yes, it would be enhancements down to B Street. So it would encompass, there would be some improvements to railing to the area in front of the railing, sorry, not the railing itself. But there would be some.
And there would be an actual side, sidewalk there?
That's, that's the intent, yes. And that's the request and the funding.
Okay, you were sort of cutting out for me, Lisa, but so you're saying that the sidewalk would, that's okay, I think it's just, yeah, internet. So it would continue, there would be a sidewalk from the depot coming towards us. So I'm sort of giving the layout for the community or the public. So coming along the improvements to the step area, having a sidewalk that is accessible, ADA accessible, then going down the street past the beanery. So going, could we turn towards the beanery? So then at the beanery, it, we would have sidewalk and it would then have a better sidewalk there. Would it be wider?
Yes.
Most likely wider because it's, yeah, then, and it also where that grass is. Okay, and the grass right there would actually have sidewalk, is what you're saying, that beanery grass, I'm sorry, the depot grass?
Yes, that is, that is in the request in the application. Is taking five-foot long sidewalk all the way to B Street.
Okay, so just to show the public, so at where we have these sort of tiny sidewalks, I don't know how those ever happened, but the tiny sidewalks would become up to city standards and requirements, and then where that railing would is, we would have continual sidewalk, or does it stop right at that railing, right? Because that's, this is. Yeah.
Yeah, it would be railing. It would stop at the rail.
Okay. But this is B Street, the crossing or the light is B Street. So how would that look different? I'm confused now. You have my question, Lisa?
Moving around a lot on the map.
So before Lisa throws up from getting carsick, a lot of this is, is still to be determined by the state engineers. The intent is, yes, we, we want a sidewalk all the way to B Street so that there's an easy way to cross, but they're going to determine if that's feasible, whether that's filling in some of the slope to make a level sidewalk or using part of the existing shoulder with possibly those plastic dividers. There's a lot of options on how they could make it work, and so the design of what it would look like doesn't exist yet. There's just the intent that we would like sidewalk on the north side, all the way from B Street to the other side of the depot on Second Street.
And that means where the fencing is would be sidewalk or some area near there, either on one side or the other, or somewhere in between, there would be sidewalk. So, okay, thank you. And it makes it, you know, just same to B Street, but then it's a pretty complicated-looking area. So I wanted the public to understand that as well, that it's a, it's, I think there's a solution for it, and I'm sure they'll help us, or the engineers will help us to get, you know, a safe, accessible sidewalk. I'm excited to see it. And I hope that we have the, or we get the grant funding. So another question. Could you, city staff, could you guys give us some examples of other projects that have been completed that are similar to this in the, in the sense of the request and the and then the matching, the match versus the funding from the, what, transportation alternate? You had some words or a word for it. Can you give us some examples of other projects we've had in the city similar to this request?
Sure. We utilized this exact same program for the O Street Trail Connector. We have also used this program for some of the sidewalks down around the schools, in addition to safe routes to school programs and some other programs that were around for a year or two, depending on different streams of funding. But we used the TA funding a couple of times to promote pedestrian safety, sidewalk improvements, and things of that nature. So it's been, it's been a very generous program for us.
Great, thank you very much. And then just some support letters that we're receiving. I had a few questions on that. So it sounds like there's multiple entities that are supportive of this project. I mean, I personally am already supportive. I can tell you that I think it's awesome, and it adds to our that bigger concept of access, access or accessibility and with parks and trails and having not just parks and trails, but also sidewalks that lead to trails or lead to parks, and this is one of them. One of the many. So we, it sounds like the community and including the downtown has been this request has been brought to them to, for letters of support, and did we also get a letter from the chamber because they're often involved with this kind of downtown?
There are still some entities I need to reach out to. And we're working with the chamber on a couple of projects right now for some special event stuff, so they're a little, little tied up at the moment. But they're certainly on the list to have that discussion with, given their involvement in that, in that area, and also with the downtown itself.
Great. Okay, well, thank you. Also, just a little segue from this. Is this supposed to be a public hearing? Request this resolution?
In the, in the directives from the TA program, all it requires, it doesn't require a formal public hearing. It requires a meeting in which the public is allowed to provide comment. Their, their understanding that with COVID, some of the, some of the limitations around formal public hearings can be challenging for some communities, especially smaller ones. So they're, they're just looking for ways to engage the public. And we're also planning, provided this goes through and is approved, also a social media campaign to solicit some more feedback from the community as well to include in the application.
Okay, great. So I just wanted to make sure because it has potential for a public hearing from the other, or past situations, you know, or resolutions. Okay, all right. Other commissioners, any questions, comments? Melissa.
Yeah, first, our community is awesome at showing up virtually, so I have no doubt that you've had no problems getting feedback, Lisa. I'm not surprised after all the planning board meetings. I think it's great that you have so much public support, too. I think that'll hopefully help the grant. But I really like this project, and I like it even more hearing that it's going to clean up the, the whole part of town from the depot all the way to B Street. Probably no surprise to all of you that we, I frequent that crossing regularly. And I really like the curb extension by the depot. I think that's a really important historic building for our community, and it's a focal point for our community and sort of the front door to get to downtown Livingston. Lisa, it's really weighing on me the importance of getting people to slow down when they come to B Street, when they come in, especially, you know, when we get all of that interstate traffic coming through, and people that don't live here don't know that our crossings don't match up with the lights. And so it can be confusing for out-of-towners. So I'm really excited and hopeful that there'll be some creative ideas to slow people down as they come into our downtown, because I think that'll encourage them to stop and spend their money.
Yes.
Also, you know, I think, I just think it's great. I'm excited for it, and I hope that we can think creatively as they tear up a lot of grass along, especially that section between Main and B Street. Maybe, I know that there's some different initiatives to change grass to like low-maintenance plants that require less city, you know, the city workers to not go mow things. There might be a little way we can beautify that that's actually lower maintenance when the work gets done. It might be a good time to consider that if there's a way to make it less work and cute. I think it's, I think it's fantastic, and I think, I thank you. I thank you for taking this on. I know we've been talking about that crossing since the flags came up, and I think it's a good time. I'm excited. This is before us. I do have one question. This, so the jurisdiction is really different since it's on a highway. I know when all the downtown updates were happening, because we used to have stairs down in the downtown streets, sidewalks. It was, there were, I think, some grant funding opportunities, and also the businesses chipped in some money for sidewalks, but this might be different since it's a highway. Can you share if this is strictly funded by the city or if businesses contribute or how that works?
This, because it's in MDT's right-of-way and it's through this program, we are the ones guaranteeing the cash match. So, and we own the depot, so it's our building anyway. So that makes it ours.
Perfect. So it's easy in that sense.
Yes.
Thank you. That's it for me. I appreciate all the information tonight.
All right, thank you, Melissa. And it prompted me, I missed one of my questions, just can you explain again where the funding comes from, from us, our matching funding?
I see Shannon has joined. Hi.
Hi, Shannon.
This is coming from transportation impact fees, unless I'm naming the wrong fund. Shannon can nod at me or shake your head now. Yay, I got it. I'm the one that still mixes up, you know, special district and levy left and right, so. But anyway, so that's where the funds would come from. And right now, based on the, on the formula projections that we do in the grant application, it's about eighty thousand dollars, knowing that we may have some, some extras and some other stuff where we may want to take this, this project out a little bit further, where we would potentially fund a little bit more than thirteen percent, or we encounter some, something wholly unexpected as happens in Livingston on occasion. That's, that's why we've put in a request, or I've put in a request for it to be up to a hundred thousand dollars in matching funds.
Thank you, Lisa. That is all from me. Do we have any other commissioner comments, questions? Okay, we, it looks like we're ready for a motion. Do we have a motion from the commission on Resolution forty-nine fifty-eight?
I make a motion, we pass Resolution forty-nine fifty-eight.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Friedman and a second by Schwartz. Rule call, please.
Chair Holgland?
Yes?
Commissioner Schwartz?
For.
Commissioner Friedman?
For.
Commissioner Maybe?
Yes.
Commissioner News?
For.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Motion passes, sorry. All right, moving on to our next resolution, we have Resolution forty-nine fifty-nine, a Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, adopting planning fees for site plan review and subdivision exemptions. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to turn it over to Matthew to describe the program itself. But I do want to touch on the fact that this is what we were discussing last night in budget, is that as we need different sources of revenue to support the staff that's required to do these kind of things, site plan is a great example of that. That's a function that has been greatly increased in complexity and time and, and manpower spent in, in going through that process. And so there needs to be an associated fee with that to cover the cost of the new service basically that we're providing. But Matthew, go ahead, and you can explain what that new service is.
Sure. Yeah, so there's two fees in here. Nothing too complicated. You've already seen the site plan and approved the new site plan ordinance a few weeks ago at this point. So we are, as you saw, it's got significantly more submitted requirements, and it's going to require more staff time. There's a new application form that we've created as well. So we're going through the process, and this won't be the, the last set of fees you'll see. These are the fees that are not currently in any of the ordinances. Our zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance have the fees involved in them, so we have to go through a whole ordinance change process with that. But basically, we're updating our fees for our, our current costs, subdivision exemptions. We currently don't take a fee, nor do we take an application for, the state allows us to, to charge up to two hundred dollars. It takes our time. We should be tracking them through an application process. So that's really the, the idea behind these. They're, they're calculated by next year's budget cost per hour for the planning department, and then divided by the estimated number of hours that the planning department thinks that an application will take. So for example, we're thinking that the site plan application will take ten hours as our approximate cost per hour for the planning department is a hundred dollars. And you'll see more of these, and we are working our way through on updating all of our application forms. So if you go onto our website, you also probably see some updated application forms shortly to go along with this. I don't really have anything else for you unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Matthew. Any questions for Matthew before we open it to the public? Okay, any public comment on Resolution forty-nine fifty-nine? Don't see anyone's hand, any, or last call on public comment. Okay, commissioners, questions or comments on Resolution forty-nine fifty-nine?
I'll jump in.
All right, thank you.
Um, Matthew, is the thousand dollars like a standard site plan review fee then? You said two hundred's the max for subdivision exemptions?
So subdivision exemptions are one of the few fees that are actually set or limited by state law. So that's why that number is in there. There's not really a standard number. If you look at Bozeman's site plan review, that's significantly more expensive. It just depends on how detailed it is and how much staff time and staff costs that departments think their site plan review is. uh, much staff time and staff costs that departments think their site plan review is going to take. Every site plan review is different. Um, so it's just based on that, uh, we need to chain our fees uh need to be logically related to, to our costs. So that's, that's how that's done.
Thanks. I think this makes a lot of sense to me. I mean, I think one of many things that has been made clear to the planning board is community wants development to pay its own way, and this is part of it. Um, our staff do a lot of work for people that don't pay city taxes, and this is an example of it without a fee. So I think it makes a lot of sense and if um these fees aren't fair, I hope that it'll come back to us and we can amend them in the future if we need to change the fees. But I think it's a good idea and makes me realize how we're getting a value for Matthew with all the hours he put into the uh growth policy if his rate is a hundred bucks an hour, so. Money well spent.
Thank you, Melissa. Any other comment, question, or commissioner comments or questions? Sorry.
Not sure, just like
Yeah, go ahead, Warren.
I think it's a great, a great step forward to uh, to be uh paid by or have developers of finance of tremendous projects that uh were, that up to now, we've been providing a, a free service for, so I greatly commend it. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Uh, other commissioners? I have one question and uh that is, so Matthew, if you could elaborate on just how we came up with the number? A little more and you, you know, you, you referenced Bozeman just a moment ago and obviously theirs are a little higher. But how do we come up with that number? And then as we change, you know, and grow and see the level of work that's expected. How then do we move forward to reconsider changing that number as Melissa referred to?
Sure. Uh, so the estimated cost per hour was basically done by taking the estimated budget for next fiscal year and then dividing that by the number of work hours in a year. It came out to just under a hundred dollars an hour to run the planning department. Uh, that's my salary basically, and then materials and other costs. Um, so we, then we estimated how long each application would take. Obviously with site plan with the new ordinance, we've never done one. Um, so it's a pure estimation at this point. If we think we've over or underestimated, you will probably see me back here with a, with an update. Um, because we're doing these by resolution, they're relatively easy to change. Uh, we should probably be evaluating these once a year or once every couple of years to make sure that uh, they're keeping up with our costs and making sure that our estimates on the amount of time we're taking on these applications is correct. Um, but certainly with the, the site plan at this point, because we've never done one like this before, it, it's a pure estimation on the number of hours we're, we're taking on them.
Thank you for that clarification. Very easy to understand. I appreciate that it's time for us to start requiring some, uh, some fees of um developers and, you know, we've been working through that this year in various ways and I see this as a plus for our community. Right, uh, other than that, um, anyone else? Okay, are we ready for a motion?
I make a motion that we pass resolution forty nine fifty nine.
Second.
We have a motion by Friedman and a second by Maybe. Roll call, please.
Chair Holgland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
For.
Commissioner Friedman?
For.
Commissioner Maybe?
For.
Commissioner News?
For.
Motion passive. Our next resolution tonight is resolution forty nine sixty, a resolution of two, of the city of Livingston, Montana, of its intent to annex certain land belonging to the city of Livingston, which is described as the island in the north, we, northeast quarter of section seven in township two, south range ten east. Mr. Cardus.
Can we take a five? Can we take a five first? Chair Holgland says after seven?
It is after seven. Thank you for noticing. Um, yes, and I'm sure we'll need a map right away to discuss this one. Uh, let's take our five minute and please put up the timer. All right, we're back. Sorry, um, I'm gonna put my All right. Sorry about that. Uh, we're ready to continue. Uh, we are on resolution forty nine sixty. Uh, please go ahead, Mr. Cardus, in regards to a map of the annexation of certain lands.
Uh, thank you, ma'am chair. So this is just an extension of some of the annexations we've already been doing. Uh, one of the things that we've been looking to eliminate are islands of, of the county in the city. So this is literally a city island of county in the city. Now, I'll tell you, I'll show you what that means in just a second. So the area we're looking at um is right near the, the water reclamation facility. So this big gray square is the water reclamation facility. It's all the public works land. Um, Green Acres is here. The area we're talking about tonight is this area found in the Yellowstone, whoops, two more, found in the Yellowstone River. So that is actually city property. That's an island located in the middle of the Yellowstone River. However, it is outside the city limits. So it's city property in the county that's pretty much surrounded by city. So tonight we'll be annexing that. So this is what it looks like um from the aerial view. You can see again, here's the water reclamation facility. This is the solid waste transfer station and then the actual island itself is located right here. Uh, you can see it's not very big, uh, but there is some, there are some trees located in the middle. Currently, there's no structures, there's no services, uh, there's nothing that's, that's out there. Um, but it is city here. This piece is in the county, but also city property. And then this is uh part of the Hart K Ranch, which is in the city as well. So this is the, the, the section that we're talking about tonight. Again, it's just an attempt to bring most of the city property into the city so that we have we have authority to enforce any laws there or whatever else if we have people out on the island or whatever. I would love to install a ferry or something over there. I think that would be fun, but that's probably not in the budget for this year. But uh, it there are no real special circumstances with it. It is not actually accessible um from the river without a boat. Uh, unless you can walk across this portion, uh, when it's, when the river's low. But I'll be happy to answer any questions you have on this particular chunk of land.
All right, thank you, Michael. Let's open it to public comment on resolution number forty nine sixty. Any public comment? Oh, go ahead, Becky.
Hi there, Becky Derosa, six oh four Arbor Drive. Um, nice to meet everybody. Um, just to clarify what was just said. This property, um, so our, our, our home actually faces that island. And I just want to clarify that that island you said is already ci- city, considered city property. It's just you're moving the, the city lines to encompass that area. Is that what I'm hearing?
That is, that is correct. It is already city property. In fact, I'll bring that up again just so you can see it. You can see that it is owned over here by the city of Livingston. Uh, so this property already belongs to the city. It's just not within city limits and this will just bring that city property inside the city limits.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Right, thank you, Becky.
I had one other question. I'm sorry, Michael. Um, I think that was Michael was talking. You talked about a barrier. What is, what do you mean by that?
I'm not sure how I use the term. Um, I think it just says it just, there's no, there's no way to access this island currently.
You said that if, if there was, if there were funds, you would hope for a barrier at some point. What I'm asking about.
A ferry, like a forth on a cable, yes.
A ferry cable, gotcha, okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Becky. Any other public comment or questions? I don't see anyone else. Any commissioner comments or questions? Okay, Melissa, go ahead.
I just, um, was thinking about the timing. I, it was a while ago that we went over the list of annexations and I just don't remember this being on the list. So I don't know if you could explain like the timing since it's unlikely it will ever be developed.
It will be unlikely, well, it will be impossible to develop unless the city wishes for it to be developed. Um, so development isn't actually a concern in this particular annexation. It's just authority, especially if we have you know, people that decided they wanted to camp out in the middle of the island or use it for other things such as launching fireworks or, or whatever else people might use that island for. It's so that the city has the authority to um basically police on its own property instead of having to call the sheriff's office. So it's a lot like we did uh with Mayor's Landing, uh, which was a city park, but was in the county. This is the same thing, city property in the county. Um, it was not on the original list because I don't think we knew it existed. Uh, this is one of those things that we discovered as we've been kind of looking through this area with the Green Acres annexation and looking through it in the growth policy and trying to figure out the different areas. But we discovered that, yes, that's actually city property, so then that should probably be brought into the city.
So there's not gonna be like a budget proposal for a police boat or anything?
I, I can't promise Dale won't ask for that, but no, I, I don't think so in the, in the meantime.
I was just joking. I wouldn't expect that. Um, is there anything else? Michael, that you can offer that we should know about? I don't know, like taxing, like I think that there's, does it change? I mean, this, it's city property, so it's unusual in that sense. Is there anything else we need to know about like financials? And how that
It doesn't change anything because it is city property. It's not taxed, um, because we're exempt organization from taxes. So it wasn't, it doesn't change anything as far as that goes. It actually changes very little. Uh, the only thing it does do is give us authority to go out there and, and do things if we need to. And that includes cleaning the area if there's, you know, any danger out there, because I, I'm sure that people use it occasionally. I'm guessing most people don't even know it's city property. Uh, but it does give us the authority to go out and, and do anything we need to do, whether that's law enforcement or cleaning up the area just to make sure it's safe and people do access it. So it's just, it's really administrative more than anything.
Thank you. That's helpful. That's all the questions I have for now.
Thank you, Melissa. Anyone else? I was gonna, going to go, but I'll wait. Anyone else have questions or comments? Uh, all right, I'll just ask a question. I believe that this island is mostly flooded generally, correct?
Uh, it depends on the time of year, but you can see basically anywhere that it's sandy, that is gonna be high watermark. So that's, that's areas that are usually usually underwater if the river has any depth to it at all. The center section where there's the trees, uh, that can get flooded in high water, but that actually is dry land most of the year. Um, you know, occasionally depending on how, how high the river gets in the spring, you may get some flooding there. But in general, that's, that's dry land and is accessible through most of the year. Again, on this riverbank over here, um, that's sporadic. Oh, I guess I'm talking at a screen that you can't see. That's, that's why I have face sheet. It's like you're being Uh, so the sand there is the area I was talking about to begin with. That's obviously um water a lot of the year. This area is more intermittent, but this center section where the trees are, that is actually dry and accessible through most of the year. That's probably a lot easier to understand when you can see the screen.
All right, thank you. Um, we have other areas of our community that are like that as well, you know, along the river. I think this, uh, like Melissa said, I don't recall I think this, like Melissa said, I don't recall us discussing this, but I think it seems like a logical request to annex this. It's simple. It's not a private that it's not private property at this point and won't be. So other than that, I if anyone else has anything to say, I think we're ready for a motion unless someone else has something.
Make a motion to approve resolution forty-nine sixty-one. Am I jumping the gun?
Did you call? I did, because I could tell that most people didn't have anything to say, so I thought we should move along.
Yeah. Prove forty-nine sixty-one.
Second. All right. Thank you. We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please.
Sheriff Hoagland.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Four.
Commissioner Friedman.
Four.
Commissioner, maybe.
If we're talking about forty-nine sixty, yes.
Oh, I said the wrong one. Thank you. Forty-nine sixty, I think I said, what did I say, fifty-nine? I think forty-nine something, sixty-one, who knows? It's forty-nine sixty. Thank you for your clarification, Warren. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by maybe. Roll call, please.
Sheriff Hoagland.
I lost.
Commissioner Schwartz.
He said yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Four.
Commissioner, maybe.
Or.
Commissioner News.
Or, good catch, Warren.
Motion passes. We're moving on to resolution E. Resolution number forty-nine sixty-two, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Livingston School District for a school resource officer program for school years twenty-two-one to twenty-two and twenty-two to twenty-three and twenty-three to twenty-four. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is an agreement that we do renew every three years. And the only reason it's coming before you is because it did expire. Other than that, there, I think literally the only changes to the agreement are the changes to the years. The, the city and the police department are very happy with the way this works out. I think the school is also very happy with the way it's currently working. There continue to be annual meetings between school administration, the chief and the assistant chief to work out any issues as far as how the program will be administered. But the program itself is approved at a high level by the commission. So this is just asking for renewal for the next three school years.
All right, thank you for your clarification and information. Do we have any public comment on resolution forty-nine sixty-two? I don't see. Oh, I see a hand. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Hi, yeah, Jonathan Hedinger. Two, 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 Will Drive. I just wanted to make a comment that I'd be interested in getting more information about this program and just kind of how it's working. Nationwide, a lot of cities and school districts have moved away from having school resource officers because they help contribute to a problem called the school-to-prison pipeline where children who are often are most at risk, including those in poverty, those racial minorities and those with learning disabilities end up getting in trouble and getting basically cited criminally for things that normally would be handled in school. And so basically, it leads to these children getting into the criminal justice system at an earlier age. And it just seems like this is something that should be considered, whether, I remember when few years ago, there was a story in the Enterprise about the high school giving out, getting students disciplining students for tobacco. And if I remember correctly, they were giving kids criminal citations for having tobacco products. And that just really seems problematic rather than just handling it in school to escalate the situation like that. I think in a community like Livingston where we've seen the, there, there'd be a lot of youth mental health issues. It would make, might make more sense to invest in something like counselors and things like that rather than investing in a program like this that kind of helps escalate a lot of these situations, especially for those students that are most at risk. So I just wanted to say that. And yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any other public comment? I don't see any other public comments or hands up. Okay, commissioners, questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Warren.
I'd like to make a, an observation. I know several families who have children in school and the school resource officer has actually been a very positive force in terms of counseling children in terms of getting them help and in terms of making proper sources at the school know that someone is having a problem, not, not to harass them or prosecute them, but to, to get them help. I think at some point with the, there's large parts of this country that you cannot compare to Livingston. No place is perfect, but there are other places that on, on all ends of the spectrum in the, in the society, whether you're on the the authority part or the student part don't even come close to the situation in Livingston. I think it, given the given's as, as far as problems that have arisen with violence, I think it's a, an excellent situation to have someone in the school who can deal with it. I know the current, I do not know him personally, but the current school resource officer is doing a terrific job. So I would not be adverse to continuing the program as it's going. They've got a good cooperative effort between the school and law enforcement. And I think it should continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Other commissioners, go ahead. Go ahead, Melissa.
Yeah, I have some questions. I guess based on what Commissioner Maybe said in the public. So I don't, usually when we see a contract extension, it often comes with, I'm just thinking, this is, this is my first time with this contract extension. But I'm thinking when we typically get contract extensions, they often have data like the, what's the position Katie Weaver, like Katie Weaver's position, the MSU extension? Like those partnerships, we often have data or reports or things like that that show how the program's working. And I actually looked. I tried to find information on the city website for this, and I didn't find any. And I tried to look on the school website and I didn't find anything. So now's as good a time as any to ask, do we, you know, Warren mentioned something about a violence in schools? Do we have a history of violence in our schools that initiated this program that I haven't heard of?
I don't, I can't tell you when this program was initiated, but as far as I know, there's no significant history of violence.
Okay, it sounded like Commissioner Maybe was suggesting it decreases violence. So I was thinking maybe that we had a history of violence, but there's no history of violence. Okay, awesome. So I'm interested in the statistics of this program. Do we have? Or where are the numbers or what are the numbers for the numbers of arrests with the school resource officer in the school?
I don't think there has been an arrest by the school resource officer, not that I know of off the top of my head anyway.
Would that data be available somewhere?
We could go back and look through the arrest records, but I know at least, well, at least the time I've been here, I don't remember any arrests happening at the school.
Okay, I just know that the chief records a lot of that for his reports. I just didn't see a subset for this.
A lot of it's juvenile records, so they're not disclosed publicly.
Okay, so if there is an arrest, we wouldn't know about it, is what you're saying?
We would know about it, but you probably wouldn't have much data on it.
Would that information, if there was an arrest, be available, even if there was no data on it?
I assume it would be, but I don't think, I don't know, Courtney, do you know if we've ever had an arrest in, in the school by the SRO?
If we have, it's been a very long time. Almost all enforcement actions then go through the juvenile probation office and they are dealt with informally. And they often aren't cited into any court at all. If there is something that is really, really serious, which is often not school-related, then it goes also through the juvenile probation office and through district court. If we get an odd juvenile citation, it's usually an MIP that has nothing to do with school. So like I said, the, any citation or any kind of enforcement action taken in collaboration between the school and the SRO is done informally. It goes through juvenile probation and those records are sealed.
Okay, so it sounds like what you're saying is if there's interactions with the police and minors, it's more than likely happening outside of the schools. And if it's happening at all, it's since they're minors, that information is sealed. Is that kind of interpreting that right?
Not quite. The, if there is an enforcement action taken, say there's somebody that's caught with tobacco or alcohol in their locker, then that's dealt with informally through the juvenile justice system. And it's not directed through either city court, justice court, or district court. So there's no formal court record. And those juvenile justice interventions, as they're collaborated between the school, the SRO, and the juvenile probation and system are, are sealed records. We don't have them. In fact, I don't even see the tickets.
Thanks, Courtney. I'm just thinking like you really need to be an attorney to follow all this, so I'm glad you're here helping us. Okay, I'm just making notes so I can remember what you said. I guess the other common thing that comes up is if there's arrests in the school, often it's linked to particular demographics like ethnicity or disability, but it sounds like we wouldn't have the data on that either, since we don't apparently have any data on if there are arrests in the school. Is that correct?
Well, there aren't actually arrests in the school. Nobody gets arrested in school. If there is some kind of enforcement action taken, whether it's strictly school-related, some kind of collaboration between the school and the SRO and juvenile probation. And certainly they have state statistics and probably county statistics. But probably they are not city-specific. And they would certainly not, not be terribly detailed because of the juveniles' right to privacy.
Okay, so if we were interested in the information, we'd have to look at what the state numbers are and just infer what the trends are across Montana, since it wouldn't be specific to I mean, more or less, that's as good as we can get, it sounds like with this segment of age.
I, I would say, and I have had numerous conversations with the juvenile probation officer, and she would be more than happy to speak to you guys. And she would be able to give you some more local broad trends. But no, specifics aren't something that you're going to get. Nor is that probably appropriate for juveniles when they're being diverted out of the justice system so that there isn't, isn't formal intervention and that they're allowed every opportunity to correct behavior without formal enforcement.
So who did you say that person was? That was the juvenile?
It's Lisa Mayer, and she is the juvenile probation officer.
Probation officer, and she's in Livingston?
She is.
Okay. Lisa Mayer. Yeah, I like the idea of everybody getting a chance to succeed. So, thank you.
Yeah, and she may be more comfortable talking to you one-on-one than in a public meeting, but she is certainly offered to be part of conversations around interventions with, with juveniles.
It's so important. That's fantastic to hear because I know this is a really at-risk part of our community with just the mental health crises in our state, and it's really targeting our kids. So that's really great to hear that she's willing to talk to us. Thank you, Courtney. The other topic that was brought up was like tobacco and vaping, but I will assume that we also don't have that information because of all the reasons already said. A couple other questions, I guess, you know, Michael, you said that they're meeting once a year. Is that right? The chief and the school administrators?
That's a required minimum, yes.
So I'm seeing in the exhibit A that it's actually at least once a semester on page one hundred four of the
Yeah, I think that's correct. I think it's per school semester. That's correct.
Okay, good. So I just wanted to make sure. Do we have any information from those meetings, any reports or anything?
No, those are usually reports, or those are usually meetings between the chief and the assistant chief and the principals involved. Just to iron out any details of hours and where they want the officer, any issues about how they want us to interact with the administration, because basically the officer is more or less under the direction of the school for most of the, of his workday, which, so we just make sure that all those procedures are, are clear and that they know what authorities they have to task him versus what authorities the city have to task them. So they're really administrative meetings to make sure that we're getting the results we want and that we are focusing in the right areas and that everybody understands the different roles associated with it. Because it is kind of a mix of authorities when we go to this kind of model.
Okay, so it says that the meetings are to evaluate the program and performance. So you're saying it's more administrative, like here's when you're working and where you're working, and it's not so much evaluating performance?
Well, I think it's evaluating the performance of the program, like is the program working in the way we intended it to work?
But it's, it's more informal than anything written down.
It is. It's just, it's just a conversation between the school administration and the
Okay. So the, another question I have is, so there's some data that suggests it talks about incidents of punishment broadly, like and by punishments, I mean discipline in schools with resource officers and without resource officers. Do we have any data to compare those two models?
Well, we don't have any data within the school system because the school has a resource officer. You mean like with other school systems in the state or what kind of, what kind of data would you like compared with what other schools?
Well, I mean, at this point, it doesn't sound like we have any data. So I think like ideally, right, we would compare Livingston before it had an officer to Livingston after it had an officer. But it sounds like we don't have any data at all.
Well, what, what would we compare? What are we comparing as far as data goes?
Disciplining disciplinary measures for students. That is something that is typically measured with these programs.
No. So I'm, so just for my, I haven't read whatever you're, you're referencing. So you're talking like this, the legal discipline, the legal, or just the school's discipline?
Yes, the school's discipline.
Okay, I'm pretty sure we wouldn't have any data on that. That would have to be school data.
Um, so where I'm going with this. Where I'm going with this, Mel, is that, um, with these programs. It is not uncommon to be comparing the interactions between adults and students. When you change the variables of who is present, such as police officers in the school. And what I'm trying to get at is finding out, because we didn't have a report with this, we didn't have any sort of summary. Like we have with other contracts. I'm trying to find out if there's anything to base this decision on. And we have no information. I mean, usually with a contract, we have something like a report of how effective it's been, or. How many people use this program, the changes we're seeing in the community. This is why it's effective to keep putting money in this. Pocket, and I guess I'm wondering what tools are being used to measure the effectiveness of this program, because it sounds like. There's no feedback. I mean, there's no formal feedback coming to us as the commission and it's. It's. What's on my mind, and I'm trying to like offer opportunities for feedback, and right now I keep being told there is no feedback.
I think the difference between this contract and other contracts is usually we are contracting with someone for services. This is really the school contracting with us for services. Um, this, these aren't city needs that we're fulfilling with the school contract. These are school. Needs or school desires that we're fulfilling with the city contract. So we don't have. Performance measures on that because we aren't asking for the service, we're providing the service. Um, so it's really the school's decision of whether they think this is valuable to them. Um, and we're not, also not spending resources on it. We're receiving payment from the school for the services. So this is actually reducing the cost to the city of the officer. Because the school is paying their salary for the portions of time that they are at the school.
Well, I mean, we're paying for it, Michael, because. The salary gets paid in part by the city. And the only place that this officer works is in the schools.
No, that's not correct. The officer works in the city on patrol during, um, when anytime school's not in session.
I thought I read on the, I thought I read on the city website that the SRO, the. What was it that I read? It was like the SRO, the chief and the assistant chief didn't patrol?
The SRO is not on a standard patrol shift, because when he's in school, he's in school. But when he's out of school, then he does fill in on patrol shifts. He also can fill in overtime situations if necessary. Um, so a lot of times he's doing overtime during a Fourth of July parade. Our current school resource officer is also one of our bicycle officers, so he, um, does items like the parade and those issues. So. Anytime there's a school holiday or that there is, school's not in session, like during the summer, he is still a, a city employee. And that's why the, the school only covers portions where he's in school.
So. So this, the police policy online should probably be updated then, because it says that they don't patrol and it sounds like he does, but, um, so that's just a footnote, but. So, okay, so what you're saying is there's no report from the city because the school is asking for the service to be provided. So did the school provide anything? With this request for a contract extension, saying how this is beneficial and why they want a city employee in the schools?
They didn't provide us any other feedback than that they liked the way the program is working and it's valuable to them.
Okay, so this is like a really tough issue for me because. We just had a meeting last night outlining all of the challenges, um, to meet the needs of our com- community, including. A moratorium on new parks and trails. Including reducing parks and trail maintenance, including. Potentially not being able to implement the growth policy in a timely manner. Um. I don't feel like we have data to support the position, not from the city and not from the school. And I feel like I've asked a bajillion questions. Trying to get any information and we don't have any, um, data. And we know. From the meeting last night that there's. The social worker is not on the table yet moving forward. Um, it's in a potentially proposed. Employee pool along with nine other positions and twenty more if the wellness center moves forward. And being told that the commission is gonna have to make tough decisions about the budget. Um. This particular contract is hard for me, hearing all of that last night. And knowing that I have never heard anybody from the public, ever. Talk to me about the school resource officer as being a priority. Um. I just haven't heard it. I've talked to hundreds of people in this community and listened to, at this point. Hundreds of hours of meetings, and I've never heard it come up before from the public. Um. So just as a representative of, of the community at large, I'm finding this one, this particular topic to be difficult to support. Just haven't heard public support for it. And there's no data in front of me to support it. So. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Um, any other commissioner comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to, uh, reiterate a couple of items. Um, fortunately, we haven't heard anything about the school resource officer. It's kind of like, and this is a real cliche. It's like having insurance. That you never hear about until you need it. And with what has happened in this country. Uh, just because it hasn't happened yet, it doesn't mean it's not going to happen. And I think as far as information, I think the best, um, view. Of what's happening in, in the school is to, uh, well, you would know, Dorell, you know way better than anyone. Um, that, um, there have been a lot of positive, uh, events happen. Uh. And students helped by the president of the, presence of the officer, not in terms of violence or, or anything associated with it. Uh, again, through. Through people I know, not through my own children. Um, the school is doing. From what I've seen, a terrific job in terms of linking. Children, students with problems with the counselors they have in the school now. Um, I don't think there's a vast void, uh, there. And as far as data goes, I think a, um. A discussion with school officials, with school counselors. Will show that the, um, presence of the SRO has, um. Been very positive. I think it's money well spent. Um. If there is a problem, uh, I would hate to think that there's not a person like that there. And I'm talking about a problem with violence, which, uh, other than maybe some fistfights, I have no idea. What goes on there, but I've never seen any great, uh, prevalence of, uh, violent problems in the school system. So I would say that the best way to gather information is to talk to the school and to the school counselors. In relation to the presence of, uh, of the SRO. Thank you.
So, can I have the floor again?
Thanks, Warren. Go ahead, Melissa.
So I'm conflicted, Warren, because you're saying that like, we shouldn't compare ourselves to other communities, and you're also like comparing us to other communities. So I'm just noting that, but also there's nobody here from the school. Advocating for this. Like you said, if we talk to the school made administrators and the counselors. That administer the program, but they're not here. Like I haven't heard from them.
Well, in a minute, you'll hear, you're gonna hear from one in a minute.
So I'm just.
But I'm waiting on you to, everyone to have their say, but I can help clarify some of the questions. Or your, your concerns without, I'm not going to go into it, um, in depth.
I just wanna be realistic that we have public meetings and we invite the public to come, and we know that it's beyond the capacity of a commissioner to call each citizen individually to get feedback, and so. It's true for every item on our agenda, um, whether it's an annexation or a contract. So. I mean, I'm here and I'm listening, and I'm always here and I'm listening, and I'm just sharing that I haven't gotten feedback on this ever. Um. And it's on the agenda and we had one comment from the public, so, thank you.
And Madam Chair, just, I think you're still muted. But.
Yeah, I had to, yeah.
I, I did look up the financial information on it. So if we didn't go forward with this contract, it would cost between another twenty-six to thirty thousand dollars out of the general fund. Uh, because that's what the, the cost for the school provides us right now. So there would be approximately an additional thirty thousand dollars. Um, out of the general fund to pay for the officer.
And how many hours of work is that, that he spends in the school?
Um, I'd have, you know, it's a standard school day, so I'd have to figure, I think it's about, um. So if you use twenty-eighty as the average, I would say sixty to seventy percent of that's in the school. So you could do the math on that, but I, I'd have to get those numbers specifically from Dale.
So then you would retain him as an employee and he would just, um. Go into rotation with the other offers, officers to help, um, take care of the overtime?
That would most likely be what would happen, yes.
Okay, thank you for that information.
All right, sorry about that. ICE is making noise in our, our home, etc. Um. I, I do wanna just state obviously a couple of things. I'm going to abstain from voting on this. Uh. I am on both sides of this issue, obviously, having, uh, or being a school administrator and as well as a city commissioner. Um. And I'm choosing to abstain. Uh. A bit of, uh, just, I know some questions were asked about data or some information, and I do, I mean, I can answer some of it. And that includes, I, data in the past, um, I can't remember how current it is, but it was probably a year, year and a half ago. Data regarding, um, school shootings. Um, there were no documented cases at that time, um, with school shootings occurring in a, a, um. A school that had an SRO. And that was some time ago that I don't know the exact time where that data was released, but, uh. That is data that's considered often in, uh, why people or why communities and schools choose SROs. Um, just on a, um. Again, on what we, what the position, you know, obviously I know a lot about this position in that I, um. I work directly with the SRO. Um, I think. From the public comment and some of the question or concerns, I think there's a lot of assumptions as to how it an SRO would be. Um. That it's about a police officer in, in cities and different things, and there's been some problems with, with, uh. Policing in schools versus an SRO, so it's a student. Resource officer. And just to clarify some of the role, um. It's not about just arresting students all day long, which like, if, if, there's some fine line. Courtney, you had most of the information, but, um. There are times, of course, where, um, investigations move from schools to police for a reason. And, um, I always put it in to perspective for, um, myself and for families that, you know, if your child was a victim. Um, do you want the police involved? And that's often asked of the victims. Do you want to be? A. A victim in this, meaning that, um, then it moves to a different level. And in this investigation, and then the, it is moved to the police and or the SRO because he is currently or is a police officer. Um, but that's often done through family and, um, in support of, um, families. Where there may be assault or something of a higher level. If that helps to clarify that. Um. Just a, as far as the role of the SRO, I might give you a couple, like. Um, I tried to take some notes just to make sure, so to understand what they do. Um, or he does. Is, uh, working with preparedness, so helping, um, buildings in safety, uh, protocols such as earthquake, everything from fire drills, earthquake drills. Um, active shooter drills. Trainings, um, walking through, uh, classrooms. To help teachers to, um. To respond. In the best and, um, most efficient way. If something was to happen. So using their, that expert advice, we also do that with the fire department. Um, and various, uh, entities like the county. County fire. Um. Lockdowns, for example, when we had, um, the active shooter at. Uh, that was partly, um, led by the SRO, when we had the active shooter in the, uh, trailer court. Um, drills, teaching, helping us, uh, work through drills, teaching us, uh, what to do in, during drills, so teaching students. Uh, they, they're involved in a, a major, uh, team of individuals, so. Jonathan, this is for you. You can give me a call at school, two-two-two-three-two-nine-two, and I'll, I'll answer all your questions. Um. But they, we, they're a part of a major group of people that include, and I brought this group up before in our meeting. But this group includes probation, it might include, uh, CASA, so our children's advocate. In our community. It may, uh, it includes List Free, which is our mental health or our CSCT. Um, it's mental health for students, supported through, um, especially students in need. Um, we also have in that administration, school counselors, community counselors, uh. And the SRO, I mean, just to name a few. Um, and so it's a, a big coalition of people trying to help. Individual students and families, which. We do every day in communication, every day with these people, and, um, the SRO is just a part of that. Um. Uh, educational programs, we have some, uh, everything from, um, cyber laws, that's been personally my favorite one, because we deal with a lot of cyber issues. In schools and helping, um, clarify the laws and how families and students can, can. Be safe or safer, or what to do when they are unsafe. I could tell you guys stories, you'd, you'd freak out. It's pretty bad out there. Um. Uh, educational programs that involve, um, like training staff on substance, substances, I know, I. Our SRO and Laurel, when I worked with him, he trained us on what drugs actually look like. I had no idea what meth looked like. And so they had, um. A, a suitcase. To show examples of what things look like, so you can understand it and see it. So when, the first time I saw it. At a high school, I knew what it was. Wasn't our high school, by the way. Um. Uh, works with our parent liaison, which is a. An outside entity that now is funded through the schools to help. Bridge the, um, gap, and so that he, the SRO is part of that parent liaison and that bridging of the gap between. Parent needs and family needs to school and connecting the, the two. Um, and, and services for, uh, social work, social worker connections and, um, outreach. And, and services for, uh, social work, social worker connections and, um, outreach and, uh, and I'm trying to think what else I may have missed. Uh, well, that's just some of it. I could go on and on. Um, there was also some questions or some like reports. Um, yeah, the, there's obviously the confidentiality of, um, of juveniles that is first and foremost, which is good. But I have never seen whoops, dog moment, sorry about that. I've never seen like the concept of arrests and SROs. You know, I think that it, the role is an important one to connect and to support the safety of all students with the need for supports for the school and for, for, um, school, the all students and, and the school in general, but that it's very supportive in, in its approach. And I think our SRO in the past and the ones I've worked with in the past are very, very trained in how to interact and how to work with kids. And how do you de-escalate? How do you, um, how do we use trauma-informed practices to work with a student that just because the parent? You know, maybe in the system of, in the rest system for various reasons, how do we still work with that child who's actually dealing with the trauma, but they're very connected to that. As far as public support, I know that question or comment was brought up. I recall in this community, and this was actually before I joined the school district. And the same went for, or applied to the last district I was in, but the community and the schools worked together and supported this to keep and Columbine had the biggest role in that and bringing SROs into these more rural communities and in rural schools is to, how do we keep sa- our kids safer? And the first, uh, school shooting was in Montana, first one. And it was a student shooting a substitute teacher to death in a classroom. And, and it was a mistake as to who they shot, but that brought prompted, uh, SROs coming into our communities because they wanted that connection between, um, safety and students. As far as data, I, I don't know, uh, if there's any we can add to that in time, um, Courtney, but I think it, it wouldn't be a bad thing for us to do or to have or to offer to the commission is, um, some, some type of data to show its effectiveness. Uh, I'm trying to think. I think, well, I could go on and on. I think that like I said, I will abstain from voting on this contract, but I also, just as someone who works with it, I would never support this as an administrator if I didn't see it as an effective, sorry, an effective student-centered role that we see in our school or have in our schools. I would never support it, zero support if I saw it as anything aggression or aggressive or, um, not child-centered or student-centered. That's all from me.
Can I ask follow-up questions from what you said? Cause you said new things, um. So do the, do the school resource officers require special training then? It sounded like you were implying that they do. They have different training than other officers?
Cool. There is, I think there's a lot, there is a level of training that has, you know, it's been a long time for me talking about this, but there's different trainings, including like trauma-informed practices, different, um, how do you work with students, um, or younger kids in crisis? Yeah, um, Michael, do you want to elaborate on the police training part of it?
Is that from the school or from the police department?
It's, it's usually through the city. Um, we do both the trauma-informed care that Commissioner Hoagland was talking about, as well as the ACIS training, the adverse childhood experiences. Now, we are trying to expand that to our other officers and not just the school resource officer, but the school resource officer is the first one that we make sure that training is available for. And then we expand it to the rest of the force because while it's absolutely necessary for the officers in the school, it's also useful for all the officers because they're going to encounter, you know, children in the community and other places than school. So while, so the answer is yes, there's different requirements, but no, we try and get all the, the officers that same training because we think it's useful across the board and not just in the schools.
Yeah, that's great. I, I agree. I think what you just said makes sense that everyone should have access to good training. Um, Darrell, you just gave an awesome readout of all of the programs and I, you know, coming from a rural community myself, I have no doubt that the police department would be involved in supporting some of these unique challenges that you've faced today. If there was an SRO officer or not, like I'm sure that's just how small towns work, like fire department and police officers go to schools to teach kids about different things and that's just part of it. So, um, but it would be great if this school had offered some of these things to the commission, cause there's no way that we would know if you weren't a school administrator. I mean, nobody else is probably reaching out to school administrators and I want to just acknowledge that this, you know, two of the five of us here have kids in schools and this is every probably adult's nightmare. Some of the scenarios that you brought up, Chair Hoagland, Principal Hoagland. These are like the, some of the worst things that we can imagine happening to our kids and it's tragic that like an SRO or a school resource officer doesn't always fix it, like in Parkland. Um, as an example, right, where seventeen people were murdered. And there was an officer there. So I wish, I wish we didn't have to even have these conversations and that there was an easy solution to these things, but, uh, you know, there's no, I don't know, it's a complicated challenge for our community to face and I really, really wish that we would have had, I really wish if the public supported this and the school administrators and employees supported this, that they would have reached out and showed up besides you who are required to be here because I have never, ever heard anything. I just haven't, the only public comment honestly that I've gotten has been negative. So yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm just being honest and um, I'm glad to hear that. Well, I'm not glad to hear that we always have more work to do for city staff, but I'm glad to hear that, like, we would be retaining city staff regardless of how the vote goes. There's plenty of work for everybody to do, like that's important. So thanks for all the information that you were able to offer on the fly, Chair Hoagland, Principal Hoagland.
Um, you know, and so one second Mel and just one, thank you, Melissa, for your thoughts on that. I think I think my frustration in, in in the statement of negative, that I've only heard negative. And I've, you know, we could say that across the board for a lot of the issues we deal with and it's often to do with what people don't know, they don't, they don't support or they don't understand often with different things like history. Like the SRO came about not just from a school, but from a community when it came to our community. And then, so people are like, and then tying us into other communities and, you know, what is happening, say in Houston is then equated to it happening here. And I just don't think the role of SRO, it, or of any, or the SRO here is that. And to, there, there's too much connection to assumptions as to how it might be. And yeah, there's, there's still some, you know, there's confidentiality issues. There, it, we're talking about kids. And I think every adult who has been around kids, it respects that, right? Like it's just a different world. You have to treat them with a different level of, of care. But yeah, I think people who don't support an SRO, I'm going to just lay it in our community, don't understand it. And that's our role and our responsibility to make sure we do have people understand it. But not once in the time I've been a commissioner, whether I was an educator or not, because I started out not in education here. I wasn't working here. Have I heard a negative about our SRO and the program being ineffective or the, the role should be, um, we should get rid of it. Even after he has to deal with really difficult situations and parents are not happy. They still understand the role and support it. And I would say I deal with this every, every day. Every day, every week, every month. I'm in it. I'm in the trenches and I have never heard a negative, like get rid of this, it doesn't work. From a parent's perspective or from the families. So.
Ma'am Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mel.
Oh, wow. I've been here twenty years. I put three grandkids through high school. And the schools in the system here, I have a wife that taught in the middle school and the high school. And in twenty years I've been here, I've always heard a very high level of talk of how important that position is. By nature of the work, I don't think we're going to hear much about it. I don't know what you're going on in Darrell's home where they're bringing up kids. You don't know what went through our house of bringing up kids. But this important, very important position and a lot of it is in-house and that's the beauty of it. So I don't know, uh, I've always seen this as extremely positive. And like you say, it's another person, if something does go haywire and somebody does come into a school and create a problem, it's got somebody there. But I think it's a very efficient, good program, but not much where you're going to have much data. And I think by nature of it, we don't know what's going on at the middle school of the, uh, things that you're involved with on a day-to-day basis and how students are behaving and not behaving. That's not our thing. And I think this program, the fact that, that people don't know much about it, it is working in the way it's supposed to. So I've always given a very high marks and I think it's extremely important. But it falls, it doesn't fall into categories. And I understand Melissa's frustration, there's not going to be much info flowing in. The fact that the schools wanted to happen all this time, it's got to be a good sign. It's got to be a plus and that's the way I look at it. Because it's been an awful long time and I think it's been very successful. And that's, that's how I feel about it. I think it's a very important program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mel. Um, one additional thing I forgot to mention, uh, rule and responsibility, and I think it's probably my favorite one and I forgot it. Is, um, well, child check, checks, so checking on the welfare of children or a welfare check on a child. One of the advantage of, advantages of an SRO doing it is their relationship with children and it being a, a visual a, a presence, let me say, in the schools, they get to know our students and probably the, when the hardest things to do is to call and say, I, we're really worried. And we cannot contact this child. We don't know where they are, what's going on, if they're safe, if they're alive. And having a, a SRO who can connect and, and we can call is, um, vital. It, um, I can tell you when we work with the county, it's not as easy. And it's not because they don't care, it's just because it's a different process. And it takes, and Brad has been awesome. But it's a different, it's different. Right? That we don't have that quick access for quick safety checks, quick, um, wellness checks. You know, it might include suicidal ideation, etc., but having that connection is very, very helpful. Um, anyone else before we move into a vote?
Um, Madam Chair.
Yep, go ahead, Quinn.
I guess about, I, I spoke up. Um, who is current resource officer right now, Darrell?
It's Will, Officer Williams.
Okay, so.
And, uh, he is retiring.
That's unfortunate. Because, uh, I think he's been one of the better ones. Um, I, I had my kids went through school. Um, I think that's a SRO started when my first, my oldest one was, uh, in high school. And I believe that was wholly funded or partly funded by a parent, um, to get things rolling. But be that as it may, um, um, my kids have had Brennan in the past, the SRO. Some, uh, early on, I don't think it was good and bad. Um, Officer Williams is one of the finest, uh, people that I've seen interact with kids and stuff like that. And as long as we have the training and they have the training um, and know how to work with, um, with our youth and stuff like that, I'm, I'm, I'm in support of it. In the past, I had mixed feelings about it, but, um, seeing somebody like Officer Williams work, and his dedication, um, is incredible. The rapport he develops with the, with the kids and stuff, so, um, with that, I yield. Thank you.
Darrell, can I say one more thing?
Yeah, go ahead, Melissa. And I have one last thing, just a recommendation for Michael on this.
I am, go ahead. I just want to say that this is a really difficult topic, I think, for all of us to some extent. And I am really grateful that we can have difficult conversations in public, the commission and city staff, and be really honest and direct and open with each other. We don't always have to agree. And I appreciate that we can still come together and work together. I think that that is awesome. And I just want to thank all of you while we're on this topic for giving me the same respect that I give you.
Thanks, Melissa. Thanks for putting that out because I think we're and sometimes we need a reminder. So thank you. My last thing is, Michael, I think one of the, uh, a point that I think we could do something about in the long term is when this contract is brought up by having, um, having either school staff or, um, Dale or the chief having, participating in, in that as you do. So talking about the process, the expectations of the role, you know, the conversations that and the agreements that are made as far as those duties, the duties of the SRO, but having that brought to us. Um, and I think that goes for other positions as well. But I think having that brought to us would help in, for commissioners to understand the role and agree with it or not. All right. Anything else? Okay, um, well, do we have a motion from the commission on? It's been so long, I flip pages, sorry.
Yeah, I make, I make a motion, we pass Resolution forty-nine sixty-two.
Second.
We have a motion by Friedman and a second by Navy. Roll call, please.
Chair Hoagland.
Abstain.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Maybe.
For.
Commissioner Noots.
No.
Motion passed us. Okay, moving on to we have one action item tonight. We have action item A. To schedule enterprise funds budget work session. Okay, Michael.
So the general fund workshop, so this would just be the enterprise fund workshops, that'll be water sewer streets, solid waste and ambulance, as well as the special funds, which is a conglomeration of odd things that we, we do occasionally, but we usually don't spend much time on. The staff will be ready to present that to you. I think we can get you the presentation. We're going to finish up the, the details on the sixth. I can get you the presentation by the tenth. So anytime after that, if you'd like to schedule it is up to you.
Okay. So you think that we, you could get the information by the tenth? And we do have quite a few meetings. So commission wise, we have one on the tenth. What else? Do we have one on the eighteenth? Twenty? And some of us have meetings in between, so we
Do we have one?
So what do you guys think?
For some reason I have one on the twelfth or did I forget to delete one? I must have not deleted it, okay. Drive on, I don't care.
Do you have a board meeting on that day? It could be a board.
It could be.
I think that, yeah, we had discussed a date, that date.
Right, yeah, I, yeah, I think I just forgot to delete it, that's all.
I did too. I think it's on my calendar too.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good enough, okay. So that's all.
That is.
Yeah, if you want to do it. I mean, that's three meetings in a row.
Which? Which day are you talking about?
The twelfth.
From the staff's perspective, I know Chair Holblin, your Thursdays aren't great for you. Wednesdays is hard for staff as well. So not making a Wednesday, that would be helpful.
That's fine. The tenth works too. How about the tenth?
We have, we already have one on the tenth.
Oh, we can't combine?
Yeah.
I don't think we can.
No.
No, not for the budget.
Okay.
Well, we could, I suppose, if we open and close two meetings, but I think that's for a long night.
Yeah.
Yep, too long. Can you put that calendar back up? Thank you.
It's the eleventh.
Any other ideas? I, I can't on the seventeenth. I can't on the seventeenth. We can't on the eighteenth.
What's wrong with the eleventh? Even though, you know, it's back to back, but.
And we also have work to do on the evaluation itself. To write the evaluation. That's some time.
The evaluation is?
The twenty-fifth.
When, when is it scheduled for? The budget meeting scheduled for a regular commission meeting? When do we usually do that in June?
Yeah.
Yep.
And we have to do two of them. Two meetings.
And are they finished in June, two weeks apart, or?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect.
That's tight.
Because it's a public hearing, we'll have to skip at least one meeting in between to have the proper notice. So we could do, if we do the first week in June, then we'd have to do the first week in July or whenever we wanted to in July. Or if we did the second week in June, we have to do the second meeting in July. Because there needs to be a meeting in between to allow the fourteen day notice.
What is the goal date to have it wrapped up by, Michael? The budget, the final vote at the commission?
A code gives us a lot more flexibility. We usually try to have it done by the end of July or early August.
Okay.
So we can move this into June?
I think as long as we can do the first overall reading by the end of June, but the second meeting in June, I think that would be fine.
What do you guys think?
Well, nobody jumped at May eleventh.
I think it's just too, too much to.
Too much, okay. Nobody said anything.
There's like no break for the, there's, even though the planning board is taking time off, there's like no.
Yeah, you're right.
I'm in as many hours of meetings as I've been in October.
So June, June tenth?
Going once, going twice?
What, June tenth?
So.
I don't care.
What?
I can't hear Darrell.
Or, or the twenty-fifth, May. I I feel like I don't want to add anything else in May, if we don't have to.
Yeah.
It's the busy month of my life.
Okay.
Right, it's the final month of school, so you're probably extra busy.
Yeah, it's crazy. And then we added three meetings already. So last week, have two more.
And Thursday. Mel's on June tenth, what about June tenth?
Well, Thursdays are bad for Darrell.
Oh, okay.
How about June seventh?
We don't have a commission meeting either on June eighth. That's the zoning, right?
Yeah.
I'm losing, I'm losing people. I don't know. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, because you're freezing up. I don't know why I'm.
So are you.
Yeah.
Thank you for your internet Darrell, because you're the only person who I'm seeing green freeze.
Green move up, yeah. Need a new router.
Well, we usually have a really good one. It's probably my kid's fault, just saying.
Blame your kids.
Yep.
So do we want that week? That week of the seventh through the eleventh, sometime in there?
Yeah, that week or that week before. So the thirty-first through the fourth. We already have the commission meeting or the seventh through the tenth or whatever. So one of those days.
When it's full out? What, what day is?
Well, for students, it's the third.
And for.
For me.
For Darrell.
For teachers, the teachers, the fourth, and for me, never. So, but it's a little easier in that next week, I suppose, because I don't have as many people.
Okay, so let's just use that week. Let's just choose the week of the seventh through the eleventh. Um, I'll suggest the seventh, since there's no other city meetings happening on.
Yeah, go with that.
Hey. That works. I'm gonna put it in my phone.
At five thirty?
On the seventh? Yeah.
And it's called enterprise funds budget meeting, right?
How many? How many hours, Michael?
Um, I would schedule it for four and hope we could get it done in three.
Okay, all right.
I see your three and I lower it to a two.
You can pass it now. We wouldn't even have to meet.
Yeah.
That would be probably not our best, our best collective decision.
I don't care what's in the budget. Let's just vote. There's a positive.
Thank God, there's a budget, yeah.
I think you're about to get quoted if the newspaper's still on.
Hey, I was just kidding.
It's a good qualifier.
No one better, better quote me on that. It will be on Facebook tomorrow.
I know you were being sarcastic.
Yes, well, thank you, but if it's on Facebook or in the paper, oh, not happy. Um, anyway, decisions made, done, moving on. Okay, last thing on our agenda. City manager comments.
I will forego city manager comments for tonight. I think you've listened to enough of me.
Great, thank you, Michael. Commissioner comments. Go ahead, Melissa.
I just want to say I was really pleased that Clay came. I didn't know that that was happening because I'm not on Parks and Trails Board, the no mow May, which always feels funny to say out loud. But I'm really happy Lisa, are you on anymore? No, she's not. Can one of you tell Lisa, thank you. It sounds like it was Lisa and Shannon also, thank you. I think that's really exciting. It's really a cool project and it sounds like it makes sense from a staff perspective and it's not a bad thing to be first at in Montana. So it'll be fun to see what the citizen science projects tell us about not mowing in May. I think it's, I don't know, a good community project. Pretty neat. The other topics are the planning board requirements. We were sent an email about that, the commission. That we had talked about how the residency or the, sorry. Residency is important. Freeholder, less important. And it's being advertised, it sounds like with specifically the freeholder language, and that's not something that we, the commission, were prioritizing. So it's reducing our pool of applicants to the planning board. And I just want to remind everybody that historically, we've had a hard time filling boards, so personally, I think it's good to include everyone in the process. So I just want to put that out there.
That's something you want to put on agenda, put on an agenda?
I mean, we've already talked about it as a commission. I don't know if we need to put it on the agenda or what we need to do. I think your words.
I think Melissa, we did talk about it, but we also, I think that was what we had planned to have language brought to us. And I think it's just been timing, I feel like, because there's been a lot going on that we had talked about having some language and looking at that language and having it brought to us by the city. And so it would need to be on a agenda. Is that correct, you guys? That's what I recall.
Yeah, the concern Darrell is that we just had a resignation on the planning board right after the vote for the growth policy. So we're losing a member that has been on for a while. He was a former chair of the planning board. And so it's being opened up for applications again. And I think it would be nice to have a large pool of diverse community members to draw from. And it sounded like I'm not the only commissioner that feels that way. So, yeah, I don't know. I don't know what the path is for that, but I want to be inclusive.
Courtney, do you have an answer? I know we had asked for some maybe clarification so we could next time around have, make sure we're doing it according to the state law. But also.
But I don't think you've actually requested anything from us on that.
I don't think so either, yeah.
I do. I, I recall we did. We talked about it.
I thought we kind of, you know. It's, it's the law. We can choose to ignore it. And even with self-governing powers, I don't think we can change it either, but most communities just ignore it. And I'm fine, you know, I, I don't mind breaking the law on something like this. I'll go for it.
Right, I don't, I don't know where that leaves us Quentin, since it sounds like it's being advertised with the freeholder requirement included in the advertisement, which means we're automatically getting a smaller pool.
We can take that out of the language.
Can we re-advertise it and take out the freeholder language?
We can't really do anything unless you as a commission decide that we're ignoring state law. Like, I need that direction. I can't just ignore state law.
So do you?
I'm sorry, go ahead Melissa.
It's okay Darrell, go ahead.
Um, I think that's how we we ended it because it was a long conversation, but without, like, it wasn't to that place of being able to make a decision. Because it wasn't an agenda item, but it was related to approving an individual. So we had asked that we consider this again. And so do we have it on as an agenda item? Or do we just direct right now? Or do we need to make a vote on it? That's our next. So you're saying if the commission tells you so, how do we make you that tell you so moment? Direct up.
It would have to be an agenda item with a vote, right?
Okay, so what?
That's what I'm talking about. So it goes back to what I said. Okay.
So are you, do you mean, do you want to wait for the agenda item? Do you want to?
No, I'll make a motion to put it on the agenda. I just need a second.
All second.
Okay, great.
Basically putting it on, changing the language of residency for the planning board.
And it sounds like we need this to be timely.
Yeah.
And needs to be on the next agenda.
Well, that's why I may ask, that's why I'm, I make an emotion, put it on the next agenda.
Okay.
And then Noots, Melissa gave a second on that.
Well, Darrell beat me.
I did.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So.
Okay, is that enough, Melissa, for your discussion item?
Um, that was it for the planning board topic. Thank you, because that resignation just happened, I think, between our last, it just happened. I can't.
Right.
Time is weird, COVID time. The other thing I've been thinking a lot about is the virtual hybrid. I really, really cannot say enough about how helpful it's been for the planning board meetings. I mean, the turnout, you all has been spectacular. We have had gosh, like twenty-some to fifty-some, I can't remember attendees per meeting, and it has made our job so much easier in a lot of ways, because this document was unwieldy, large. It's still large, but having that kind of public feedback. I mean, you all know, the more public feedback we get, the more informed our decisions are. And I just really want to retain that virtual component as we move forward. If anything good from, came from this pandemic. One silver lining has been people have been engaging consistently with us through these mediums. And I know that it's not perfect, but gosh, I mean, Faith does a really great job and she can run an online meeting. I know that when we started out, we weren't sure if it was going to be possible, but not only is it possible, but it's successful. And the planning board meetings, I think, are one really good example of how helpful they've been. I mean, when you get hundreds of comments, it just you all know this, because you're elected, you know that it makes it easier in a lot of ways to get a lot of feedback from the community and you can see the themes emerge. I just don't want to lose that. And if we drop the virtual option, our meeting sizes are going to be limited because our, because of our space constraints. And it's going to make it harder. And I just don't see a benefit to that. I don't want things to be harder. I want things to be easier. So I really, I really feel like moving forward when folks are ready to be back in person, we need to retain a virtual component. The last thing I want to say is that regarding the growth policy and all, maybe I'll just like save some of the, I'll, I'll bring it back up again. When we talk about the growth policy, but I think we need to pay attention to what's happening at the state. Darrell, you've brought it up before about how the state, right, the state, what the state passes at the state legislature is really changing our toolbox as local electeds and it's absolutely true for land use and it's only going to pick up, I think, in the future. I think the next session is probably going to get even more aggressive. Maybe I'm wrong. I hope I'm wrong, but I think that they're probably going to do at least as much next session as they did this go-around. With land use policy and it's already taken away tools that we would have been able to use to address things like affordable housing. So I think it's something that the commission needs to pay attention to and we need to maybe figure out a way to flag that, because commissioners will change. But our city-written documents will not. And so maybe we need to think about, do we need to put something in the strategic plan to keep an eye on these things and think about how we as a commission would want to protect these tools that we have. We as a commission would want to protect these tools that we have to get our community what they're asking for. Yeah, that'll be a conversation to talk about again, but I just wanted to kind of float that idea and give you all time to think. Thank you so much. For a good meeting and for so much respectful dialogue. I really am grateful for it.
All right, thank you, Melissa. Um, who's next? That would be Warren.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Mel.
Oh, good meeting. Um, it's all good stuff. The more we keep poking around and have conversations together, uh, it helps a lot. And, uh. There's huge challenges from the country all the way down to Little Livingston, so. It's, uh, enjoy to be part of the, part of the scene and work together. The main thing is that we do work together. I yield.
Thank you, Mel.
Um, I'll close by saying good meeting. Um, thank you for running very well, Madam Chair. Um, I yield.
All right, thank you. I, I only, I have two things. So we did just. Say we are going to, um, bring up how we will move forward with meetings. We do have some, you know, our closed session meetings are. Together in person and, um. You know, I guess I would like some advice from the city on, uh. What they know other communities have done and what is now becoming acceptable with more of the hybrid model. Because at our next commission meeting, I mean, I, I think it's time that we start to meet in person. And I said that last time, that we should be looking towards in person. Um, I know when I looked up. Information on it, uh, um. Some of the communities have done hybrid models, but it tends to not be a Zoom model. But that's the one, that's just what I found so far. It's not that people, you know, they have fifty people zooming in. And two people there, it tends to be where they give the option of call in to keep, um, numbers. Um, down, so I don't know. I would like the city to look at this and see what it is, what. I know legally we have been advised that the right, the public has the right to, um, see us. And that's how we started this, a whole process of Zoom meetings is there was a, a. We had a pretty in-depth conversation on what, what is, um. What's acceptable for, um, public meetings. And, um, according to constitutional rights of citizens to participate and see their representatives. So I would like to know sort of some options. So staff, can you bring that to us?
Can I share something to Chair Hoagland? Well, two things. One is, I don't know if you watched any or attended any of the hearings for the state legislature. I'm guessing you probably didn't because you were in school. Um, but.
I listened to them.
So their way that they had their videos set up, it was not, I mean, the way that, um. Faith and Michael set it up for our meetings. Where you can see the. The folks at the tables. And I think the podium is off to the side. That is essentially what they did at the state. So I feel like that's probably the precedent. Um, to follow. If this is good enough for the state, then that's probably a reasonable model. And then the people that zoomed in. Didn't show video. They just talked. So there was just a systematic order to go through in person and then virtual attendees.
So it's. And the virtual attendees, did they? Appear in a, on a Zoom in person so you could see them?
You couldn't see, just their voice.
Okay.
The only people you could see were maybe like, um. You could, the people that you could see, I think, were probably like part of the staff. That were helping facilitate the meetings because, you know, the, there's a lot more people involved in the state legislature than the. City Commission. Um, and a lot more, I don't know, the topics are just different. So there's some differences there. But, um, the other thing is I'm going to need to like call in or something on that. On the tenth. I won't be ready for in person on that day, but I can call in or whatever we need for that.
Okay.
This survey, it's like the executive session employee survey.
Yeah, okay.
Um.
Um, and we have a, uh, procedures and protocols for that. Yeah, I already planned that.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a heads up in case I hadn't made that clear before.
Um, okay. No, you didn't, but thank you. I'm glad to know. We'll make, we can make that happen. Michael for it. And now with Zoom, you know, before when we, we set up our, uh, our policy, I should say, we ended up really. Doing it through the phone call base, which I know is, I, I've seen it in MC. Or, um, Montana somewhere. I can't remember if it's code or what, but that's typical. Um, but I know with Zoom, there's some changes, so maybe we can Zoom in. I personally wish that we could see people. I don't like that people were, you know, in public, we would stand with people. And with Zoom, this ability to just not even show your face. When speaking on and being a public, it's speaking as a public, um. Representative or person of the community, um. I don't know. I have a problem with that.
I will tell.
We should be looking at each other.
I'll tell you, um, Drell, for the planning board meetings, I feel like a lot of people show their face. I feel like most people, um, I mean, some people, you know, there's always internet issues, so. Some people go off video probably because their connection, but, um, most people, when they're speaking, it seemed like they would come on screen in my experience.
Good. Well, I think maybe we can require that, ask people to.
It's a courtesy. Yeah, it's a nice courtesy. So I think. That's the other thing, I think, like when we have been doing it so successfully at our boards and now we're about, we, the commissioner, about to vote on this major document that we've been working on virtually for months. I would want all of those people that have been attending meetings to be able to come. And if we switch it, don't allow virtual. Then suddenly a bunch of people won't be allowed in the room. If like sixty people show up, I don't know how many people are going to show up, but I doubt we have the space for sixty. In person, um, unless we're meeting outside, maybe then. But I, I don't know, possibility, so.
So we did decide that we would make a decision to have our next meeting by Zoom or in person. Um, I mean, the health department is now considering two hundred and fifty people. Has that been passed? Gatherings of. And we would have like twenty.
It's unlimited outdoors, but not, I don't, I, I don't know.
I don't know if they made the decision yet, so.
Yeah, we, we still have mask mandate in, um, indoors.
Yeah, but how many people in that space?
Right, man, I'm, you know, if we could utilize the fairgrounds, that'd be great, but. I'm, I'm still at this point more comfortable with Zoom, just more from a part, public participation standpoint. Until we can figure out how we can, um. Do a hybrid meeting. As we go.
Michael, let's check in. Uh, you know, I agree that I still, I would consider hybrid as an option. And I appreciate your feedback on that, Melissa and Quentin. And I think it, if we can make it work, we should make it work. You know, some type of hybrid, but I feel like I, I think this, Michael, maybe you and I can check in and see how we can get this. Figured out and go from that. I feel like tonight is maybe not the option and I don't think you guys have any, any recommendation. I'm not sensing a recommendation from you.
No, it, for hybrid, it's, it's, it's difficult. We don't have the equipment, quite frankly, to do a hybrid right now. Um, and if we do have the equipment, we don't have the space. Um, there's no good place for us to do. Partial in person and partial online. It just, the technology to make sure that we meet the, the open meeting laws is, is difficult. Um, what we were doing previously was streaming it, but there was no component for anyone to participate in that manner. Doing it from a Zoom perspective, it, it's going to be difficult staff-wise because now you're, you're managing two separate meetings. And so it's, it's a little harder. Uh, it's. Space component is just, I mean, really right now for space, we have a few options. We have the community room, which we could do as far as closed sessions. And that's the plan currently for our next meeting, um, which is closed to just commissioners. But it's not got a hold of a ton of people like, because I'm, while the, the. The gathering size limits have been removed, I think are just recommendations at this point. I'm not sure a lot of people are going to be comfortable with that. Um, obviously the civic center has plenty of space, but the acoustics are terrible. You can't hear anybody in that space, so it's not usable. Um, and the fairground suffers from some of the same. Problems as far as acoustics go with some of the heaters and because it's county, we would have to do an entire. Basically audit to see if we could get our equipment in there, how we'd hook it to the internet, how we would set it up. There, there'd be a lot of work to make that work. And even then, I don't know how we get. The hybrid model to work. There are some people out there doing it and we'll do some research on how they're doing it. But especially the state and I think Kalispell and possibly Billings, they have areas set up technologically to do that. Um, and we don't have that space yet. So hybrids is difficult. We can do all online and we can do all in person. The hybrid portion gets to be technologically challenging and it would take. A while to figure out how to set that up so that we ensure people actually can participate. Because I don't want people to show up virtually thinking they can participate and then it not work. Um, that's, and you can see even, even, even tonight with technology that we're used to and we use all the time, there's still difficulties. Uh, and trying to do that with, with a live component just increases the, the magnitude of, of complexity in that process.
Well, and my concern too is that we just continue doing this because it's easier. And I think we're losing the, the interpersonal connections that we need to have with our public as well. Um, looking at each other in the eyes, you know?
Uh, is the legality of it. We're basically, right now, it's kind of like the vaccines. We're on an emergency waiver. And, uh, I don't know how long that will main, be maintained.
Yeah.
I don't know how long the state will allow us to basically fudge on some of the open meeting laws. So that'll be another point of research we will have to do.
Well, that's an interesting tension, right? Like the tension between the virtual meeting and not having the space to have the public participate. Because that's also a legal requirement is public, the public needs to be able to participate in local government. And so. It sounds like what I'm hearing you say, Drell, is that we need to prioritize finding a hybrid model.
Mm-hmm.
Like now, we need to figure out ideas now.
Yeah, I mean, it, and to me, it has some lot, there's some logic to, and solutions. That are logical, but is it doable? And I could just think we have to do a little bit of work to get there. Just another COVID job to do, you know, um, figure it out. What we do every day and the distancing has moved from six to three feet. If masking still is, you know, if you're following CDC, so, um, let's just check in on it. Um, next, next, uh, meeting. I mean, it, I know it's short term, I, but like I said, I want, I want us to be live at some point.
Yeah.
I think it's time. I think we need to get back to how, I, but I do like the option and I agree a hundred percent, Melissa. That public engagement, I mean, technology has changed that. That's a plus, plus of COVID.
Chair Hoagland, do we need to make a motion to get this on the agenda for next time?
Yeah. Yes, at least let's have a comment. Let's have an action item so we can get some feedback from public as well. All second.
Okay.
Okay.
I wasn't sure if that counted.
So can you clarify what you want on the agenda for a vote?
Recommendations, uh, con, uh, discussion, um. And recommendations, um, hybrid model. Of public meetings or for public meetings, commission meetings.
All second.
And we can at least start the conversation, see if we have a solution. If we don't, we don't, we'll, we'll work, keep working at it.
Yeah, I think we're going to need something too because like, uh, if the boards keep getting the turnout that we're getting, we have to figure it out. Because.
Um, just.
Yeah, we're over time.
We're four minutes from it. Yeah, so you know.
We had discussed this last week and we, uh, last time and we never, um, got, came up with a solution, so.
Yeah, just.
Let's just try to get the meeting over. Do we agree that we need to extend the meeting? We have an emotion to extend the meeting because we already did. Um.
Yeah.
All right, my last thing is, is just I had a, a lot of people call me over the ticketing. And I have already talked to Michael a bit about it, Faith. And actually, a couple of police officers over the ticketing of, um. Of our community members who parked their cars in the, um, street sweeper zones. This week and a lot of tickets, I think there was up to, uh, two hundred tickets were given for, um, not moving vehicles out of the way. But I also had a ton of calls on frustrations and. The people knew and I.
You froze up again.
actions are three thousand times better than they've ever been and, uh, and people felt like they didn't know. Um, but want to express that, I'll continue conversations and listening to the public will talk to me. Um, but today alone, I think I had four or five, five people. By the end of the day, who had called or contacted me over their frustration with the tickets.
Was the street sweeper broken today?
Nope.
Yeah.
I saw it.
I moved my boat, I moved my trailer, I moved my abandoned cars and nobody came by.
Oh, no, they were out today.
Yeah, I, they didn't come down my street on six, on the west side.
Well, then you can sleep in tomorrow because everything's moved.
Yeah, now I gotta re-jump everything and put it back.
Yeah. Move it back and you'll get a ticket tomorrow, so go ahead. Um. So, yeah, I just want to bring that up and I'll continue conversations. I'll talk to Michael more and, um. Et cetera, but I wanted to bring up with the complaints from the public. That's it.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at eight fifty-nine.
Thank you.
Have a good night or rest your night. It's bedtime.